And we'll call this meeting to order. At six thirty, will the secretary please take the role?
Yes, Trustee Chuck Gordon is here, Trustee Fairfax is here, Trustee Ruth.
Here.
Trustee Emily is not here, Trustee Boss.
Here.
Trustee.
I'm on Zoom.
And Trustee Bill, here.
Before we move on to the twelve minutes, is there a motion to approve? Trustee's rovers and Emily to participate remotely due to illness.
So always getting. So sorry, hi Maya.
Is there?
Hi guys.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Their role participation is approved. We'll move on to approval of minutes, starting with our special meeting of August twentieth. Are there any notes or corrections for the minutes of that meeting? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Moved by Ted, is there a second?
Sure.
My heard in my second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes are approved for August twentieth. Moving on to the minutes for our August twenty second meeting. Are there any concerns or corrections that anyone feels need to be made?
No, but I will abstain as I was asking.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So.
By Suzanne, is there a second? Second, second by Ted. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions?
Yes.
That is approved. Couple of comments. I did not receive anything via email or via the public forum, and there is no one signed in to make public comment for this meeting. We will proceed on to trustee comments and. The comments.
And I will be going to the ILA meeting, and that's one of the reasons that we're going to be changing the date for now, because the general meeting in general is. That's conflict. I am salty that I consulted.
So what is the meeting date?
We have not changed it yet, but it would be, that's the next, the first item is just the trustee comments, but it would be moving it up to October seventeenth would be the item we have in just a in just a moment, but wanted to cover general comments first, anyone?
I'd like to say that I imagine Joshua is going to talk a little bit about the continuing threats through the library, but obviously it's awful that there are now been multiple ones and around the libraries are in the next. I appreciate all the staff coming in and doing their jobs, and I'm sorry that this is the season circumstances.
And as a trustee, probably outgoing trustee, one of the things I have looked at in my tenure here was, we first started to think about a relationship with Cuban poet libraries, and we was really moving fast and furious in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And then the air just kind of came out of the balloon of all kinds of political reasons. But I would like to talk again with trustees, with staff about what the American Library Association is doing now with sister libraries with Cuba. And because it really was an idea that seemed to catch fire here in one part because they had no connection. And the business that both it itself and I made to Cuba were really quite enlightening, and there's just so much that could be done. So it's something for the future as we think about strategic, and we don't have enough to do already.
And also, we have the open house this Sunday.
Sure, it's the hundredth twentieth anniversary of the library, twentieth anniversary of this building. So I've been working with Jody and the communication team and staff members at all on all the desks and all the areas, I'll put this together, will have throughout the week will have a passive program going on at each desk with the scavenger hunt. Just more historical, just to trace the history of the library. And then that day we'll have cupcakes, and we'll definitely have some people like me this time celebrating the break because the anniversary also, we're always doing the bamboo week. So we're going to roll freedom to read and talking about that and have people sign. And it should be fun, it should be a really nice day. So I hope to see, so I'll be there.
Thank you so much. And then I have a three D. As previously mentioned, moving our meeting in October from the twenty fourth to the seventeenth. But is that you know, most of staff would be at ILA and unavailable to meet. Including Ted will be at ILA, I will not be going, we just will be getting ready for stuff in my office, I won't be able to get out of town. Also, I might be going for a work conference the week after, so yeah. Any, is there any objection to moving to the seventeenth?
Is, my only question is, is there anything we're potentially going to ask of staff that kind of leave off of that ask was going to be for them to do? Because I know we're in the middle of legit time.
I mean, we'll, we're aware and we're working on it and will adjust accordingly because then after working a little more quickly, we'll have conference, and then I'll, I mean, you'll see conferences that you too. So it's not, it's the end of the motion process, so yeah, I think it'd be a little bit more favorable if you're starting.
Okay, I just don't want to add any more crunch to anybody, sorry.
So I, I don't know what objections, but I, I won't be able to attend all the seventeenth, so, okay. I have potential conflict, but I don't know, yeah.
Okay. I think we, you know, just given the level of staff, you know, you know, obviously being unavailable, I think we will need to move to the seventeenth, and those people will have to if you can't make, I mean, it won't be the first time that we are able to, you know, if the budget's ready for passage, it won't be the first time we'll have full board attendance, you know, at budget passage, so that's, that's life happens, you know, so we will, we will work it out.
Is there, is there a way to, because you know, obviously the packet gets distributed earlier, is there like a way to send a proxy vote or something?
I don't believe proxy voting is allowed by law, so you can, you can write a statement of, you know, to be read during the meeting of support and that. That would say something to the effect of if you were present, you would be voting in favor of it.
Or an angry statement.
With that, yes, and you can.
It has nothing to do with library.
And you can, you know, ask me to read it and, and, and yeah, I don't even do a dramatic interpretation for you.
This is something we're more fun, I was gonna say, no, I don't wanna. Yeah, not one make for, because I want to come to see that, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll decide to move the meeting to the seventeenth, right, October. And then we all move on to our directorship.
Okay, we have my report here, there's a few new additions also to the reports, I'll do a few highlights, and then I really want to touch on something that the staff have done over the last month as well. I will talk about the bottom threats that is in the report, so I'll just go there, we talked a little bit about last meeting. We, we see one on the twenty first, and we see two more after that in office as well. They were all either through the, the contact us or the chat. And since then, we've had some good support from Rails, the reaching across the library system. We had a meeting with all the other libraries that had the directors, it was a meeting with all the other libraries that also had threats. And so they have a training planned with the FBI person, so the northern libraries got that training, just so we know what to do, and so we can share with staff the forward response. We talked about this amongst our staff too, there was an expectation of what you think would happen as far as when you get a bomb threat. Probably you think like, we shall be in the building, and a helicopter is going to come, and a guy is going to come, and the tactical vests and all that stuff. And that's not exactly what happened, so just managing expectations on that. It is, we, we know that usually when, and this is what some of the training is, it usually is a hoax, because once somebody's going to blow you up, they'll send you a kind of email or a chat to tell you, but it's no less unsettling to receive that and frustrating when, you know, we, we work so hard every day for someone to take the time to do this across the the state and to our library multiple times, it's unsettling. And so in realizing that we have offered last week, it was great, I took advantage of it myself, we had group and one-on-one counseling, we used our EAP, employment assistance services that we have, so it was great, just to, just to talk about it with other people, we all live it every day. So we don't, we didn't have to explain like what it's like, because we all are in it, so it was very helpful. So thank you, I thank HR and also Rob for researching, giving us that, and then for HR scheduling, using our EAP research that we had for them to come on site. We also have therapy dogs and private too, just as a distress, and just just pet the dog and just look it out, so like I said, I found it helpful, I've heard good feedback from staff, and then training is coming too, so we are knowing like how we can address this, and so the expectations that I was saying. We have been working with the police also to work a policy, so what, so we're on the same page, so we call, they know what to do, we know what to do, we're making sure like, you know, here's what we have going on, this is actually what you think we should have going on. And so we're working with them to edit that so we could have it, so hopefully next month we'll have that, so that we will also look at in terms also to add to our crisis plan, which we already have, so just unfortunately, this is not the thing that you've added to the crisis plan, so. Any questions about that, anything? Anything you want to add?
I mean, how many libraries did it end up being? I, I mean, I.
It's like, I can't even count them now.
It's, it's.
It's everywhere now, yes.
I mean, it's, it's.
It's the least one, yeah.
And that's just ongoing, right, we're not even looking across the country into Indiana.
Yeah, and also, but on the urban libraries council director, the serve like Denver and a few others said it's starting again, so they had it last year, and she said, oh, by the way, it started again last week, so they, they don't know who's doing it. The people, and also I want to add, but first, the people don't say anything like, oh, I don't like book banning, or you know, or you have this agenda, this, you know, library, but they don't say that, it just, so there has been a want to connect the two, and that's just not what it says, it's just, it's a general statement. Many of them are similar, so that's the other thing, oh, and then the libraries are working together. We do know that the police departments are working together with other systems, so that's great too, and with the FBI too. So the statewide effort, I don't know if you saw Lexi Julianus testifying before Senate about book banning and also and then, but then that's when we got them, maybe an hour later, and libraries got them. But there hasn't been any messaging in there that says that, we don't know who's doing it, you can scramble IP addresses now. So it's not as easy as like my favorite reruns, forensic files, when they solve it in twenty-two minutes, oh, the IP address is there. Arrested, it's coming from another country, the IP address. But we've gotten some other tips from libraries too, in terms of, and a machine comes back from vacation, we're talking about that, like some libraries are, they can't, so you're, it has to be a real IP address and not, you know, one from another country, has to be one that's here, it has to be like a Google or something, an email like that. So those are some things we can bear with now, so if somebody is doing that, maybe we can trace it. So it feels good to have a collaborative effort amongst libraries, it doesn't feel good to get them. So hopefully this will, this will stop, but just wanted to keep you abreast of what's going on and how we try to approach it, how we try to support staff. So we can come to work at peace, that's always stressful, but yeah.
And I wanted to say a thank you to you and the staff for being conscious of our employees' emotions, I know everyone here is very concerned about patrons usually outward facing, and I'm very proud and happy that we turn inward as well, I want to make sure that our, our folks were feeling as good as they can, or you know, at least we were acknowledging their feelings and getting them some resources, so thank you very much to you and the rest of the leadership team for making sure that our people know that they're supported and they're not on their own, taking care of it.
And also know that people in the community have been reaching out expressing their concern and their appreciation for our staff. Yeah. I wish, I wish we could just make it not happen, we can't do that, so I'm glad that we are doing, taking some measures after the fact, and then I like the idea of the tech efforts, you know, the libraries may be making to have just make it not as possible. Yeah, it's, I mean, you know, we can call it hoax, but it's a felony, and, and that's disturbing, it's, it's.
It's indicative of fear and chaos, and it's, and maybe whether it's a hoax or not, it's, that's what they're trying to cause for us, and I mean, it's serious. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but it's like, I didn't want your use of the word hoax to be and I always feel bad about using that word hoax when I talk about it, because it's like, it doesn't, it feels like, I feel like I'm diminishing it when I don't mean to, it's like like the threat of an actual physical threat is not there, but it does not mitigate the emotional hurt and pressure and stress that it puts on the people that it, that it is directed towards.
Well, the threat is there, the action is not there. So, yeah, and I do think that hoax is possibly not the best word, but but it's indicative of what's going on, and, and it's indicative of the fact that our staff and other library staffs are put in a position to defend the right to read in a way that is, is asking a lot. And I really appreciate people coming and doing that, it's important.
Yeah, it was frustrating, it's also just the waste of time, resources. And because of all the calls we have to make and checking in, and then, you know, we share a little bit of partnership, and we have to call and make sure they're okay. That's the first day, part of, we could be doing so many other things at that time and energy and resources. And to have to do that time, time again, because we do want to take it seriously, you know, just like, that's it. We did, although, you know, this, it's, they have been unsubstantiated, we do check the time, the content, they do check the building. So I just want to say that too, but that's the frustrating part for me. And it is unsettling that someone just takes the time to do this, but it just, it wastes a lot of time, resources. We can be doing, you know, something else in that like two to three hour window that it takes to do all that stuff, and then you have to go to each building and and then go back and say it's okay to all those places, and put something on the website, and so it's really sad. And we shall persevere as we do. So thank you for the support too, and thank you to the staff as well. Okay, well, on a positive note, moving on. There's some new reports you haven't seen before, we talked about the new kind of focus in the anti-racism. I heard you all loud and clear, I was listening, so make it clear of what, what's, you know, make sure we see it and hear it, so we have what the office is doing, as you can see here, so it's highlighted. So I'm just, I'm sure you had a chance to look at those things. So sorry to rile off the blaspheme, we did get his report in, but I wanted to really capture that we've had some exciting things happen with our public safety, social services, public safety director in that department. We mentioned this last time, but please see the highlight that we have a research partnership with Northwestern University, and an article, we got an article published with them with the work that Rob has done with the University, Northwestern University, five-year medical school. It's about, let's see. Rob, can you come talk about it? I don't want to miss it, and I don't want to like diminish it, because I think it's exciting, and then the other end too, and I don't want to I don't want to waffle it.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah.
So next year will be our fifth year with, with the grant, and we were, we've been addressing digital mental health equity. So the goal was to really work with BIPOC families and youth. There was a process, we had an adult advisory board, we had a teen advisory board, and we really listened to the community, I know since I've been working here that that's been a huge need, a huge disparity in those resources for teens particularly in our community, and I'm so happy that we're able to do some in-depth work in looking at mental health, particularly for BIPOC families and teens to the point where now we're able to publish our work. We received the awesome award, but most importantly, I've been contacted by a lot of libraries across the country that want to talk about different partnerships within their communities to work with bigger healthcare networks to provide a similar approach, providing those type of resources for teens, so it's worth, it actually not only helps our communities, but will be helping communities across the country. So that's something that I'm very happy about, and we can be on the leading edge of that, but it really gives a lot of kudos to our partners and also the families and adults that were partnering with us through that process, so I'm very happy about it.
And we want to know more.
Yes, so, yes, yes. Yeah, so Community Research Award, this is the tenth year from our, which is part of Northwestern, so it's a pretty prestigious award, not pretty, it is a prestigious award. It's one of the only, it is the only community and academic research partnership of this kind in the country, so for the first time, so between a library and a major research university network, so again, we're excited, we're going to have an app up and ready sometime next year for not only teens in Oak Park, but even teens that participated in the project, we had teams from Louisiana, various other states, because we were doing this through the process of COVID too. So that was like the gift of having, offering that resource and partnership virtually, so we're able to really get a lot of teams from, you know, pockets across the country to get feedback too, so it's, I'm excited about it, looking forward to they're going to be beta testing the app in the fall, so the teens of the mentorship program, and hear more from the teens and build something, and have it built by next summer.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was gonna say, does anybody have any questions for Rob?
So when you say they're beta testing, can you just say more about like exactly?
Sure, sure, so we, yep. Yeah, so a programmer joined the grant in the spring of this year, so they mocked the app, and now they can really play around, you can, all the components, all the input, I think we captured that pretty well from what the team wanted in the app, so there's information that they will help that, right, it's a help app, yep, digital mental health app, so there's there's information and resources, there are also other cognitive exercises that they'll be able to test, and it's awesome. The initial feedback from some of the teens that looked at it were like, they were really happy that we captured pretty much everything that they wanted in that, so I'm interested to see what they think in a couple of weeks.
So you started out by getting input of what people were looking for.
Oh, yeah, we got it.
Built this app, and now you've got a beta, and they're going to test.
They want to test it, yep.
Excellent.
Yep, so.
Wonderful. Is it, I, I don't know if this is applicable, but did you have to skirt any political issues when you're talking about mental health for minors and what you made accessible or not accessible to?
Political issues, like, tell me more.
Information on like contraception, or, did you have to skirt around any ideas of gender sexuality or anything like that? Didn't have to dance around any of those.
We didn't have to dance around it, we specifically focused on, I might not have mentioned, is anxiety to manage anxiety and depression, so we also worked with Oak Park Township and some local conditions in town for emergency safety responsive, when people needed to be connected with those immediate resources. It's pretty comprehensive, you know, thoughtful process on not only offering that app, but also the care that can happen after, if somebody needs an aftercare with that, so it's, it's pretty in depth as far as not only app, but also the aftercare, there are immediate needs that we can work with the township, your services, and a couple of other organizations to make sure that resources are expedited for those teams.
I don't know if this, you're talking about like internet mental health and access and pieces like that, and I'm angry and lined it up, but meeting I was at with the county GIS mapping, so folks, a couple of weeks back, and we were talking a map that they, they're developing regarding data on internet access around Cook County and the different types of stuff. Would that be of any interest to you in your work on this, or? Because I, because when it's published, I can let you know if that's.
Oh, absolutely, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the county has a tremendous amount of maps and stuff like that, but I, this was one that definitely caught my, caught my attention when we were talking about it. It's something we've talked about here around years, like, you know, the, you know, the digital divide and access to that stuff, how many people's only internet access might be phone ring that they have, you know, they don't have a home connection as well, so it was just a very, I thought it was a very interesting thing, I'll also, I'll talk to them tomorrow. When that's ready, I'll shoot it over to you.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Hi, so congratulations to you, everyone.
Thank you.
I also wanted to ask about the, you know, the type of vaccine support, the number of cases, we see the, we've been seeing those numbers for a month. I, I feel like I don't know that I've seen immigration on this list before, is that?
Yes, there is, immigration has been on several times, there are pro bono network and other, I would say, legal advocacy organizations that I lean towards, I don't specialize in immigration as far as that advocacy from entry point all the way through, there's so many nuances to that. So when I make that refer, we make sure that it's, they're connected to a comprehensive resource where they do have the case management, there's so many legal, I would say, aspects of immigration challenges that I can't represent, as, as from a legal side or whatever, and really making sure that people are not only safe in the housing piece of it, but making sure that they're on the correct continuum to becoming citizens. So it's, 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 yeah, so this, I'll say this month I didn't have any, but at least there's been four reports where it's been immigration advocacy on that.
I love that you're working with pro bono network, are you working with them for other legal items of immigration, that's kind of our coaching.
Been in Chicago Homelessness Coalition, so they have a have a clever of, of things, yeah, and then I have in the past also used Northwestern Legal Clinic as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep, well.
Again, I wanted to rewind to the inter-racism, I'm sorry, I got caught off guard by Vancouver. Anti-racism, I'm sorry, I got caught off guard by Vancouver, um. I, that was not a city that I expected to see pop up on here, um. Can we learn more about how we started partnering with? The Van, the Vancouver Public Library?
Sure, I was gonna say, were there any before we moved on, were there any questions?
They reached out, I don't recall the gentleman's name, but a consultant. Um, that's working with Vancouver Public Library, reached out to me as, as you can, um, click the hyperlink on the. Then you can see that Vancouver is a restorative city, so the library in Vancouver is trying to get on board. Um, and they saw some of the work that we've been doing, we're restoring practices, we want to inquire about some additional information, so I shared with them some of the resources, some of the things that we've been doing. Of course, over the past three years. So just been in communications with them, sharing some things.
That's wonderful.
What do you have to do to restore the city? Do you have to reinvent that?
You don't, you just have to have local governmental agencies, you know, the police, you want, you want certain organizations, the schools, the police. Um, other, other agencies in the community that will have, um, interactions with people, uh. When it, when in regards to crime or things of that nature, Spokane Public Library is doing really some awesome stuff, I went back in twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, I think. I went to Spokane and looked at the community court, the, the library in Spokane has a community court, um, that takes place on Monday mornings. Um, and we, I use some of the information, uh, from them to assist in the social services department, um, back in twenty eighteen, so.
Okay, I feel like restorative libraries or even school systems. Like my brain can rack around that, but an entire. Major metropolitan city that's decided to devote themselves to restorative efforts. Um, that's how you live.
They have shared housing in Vancouver, like they, if you, if one of your kids goes away to college, they move you out of your home and have someone else who can. Who has the needs, like if one of your kids moves out and you have an extra bedroom, they'll move you to a smaller. But it's really interesting, the pains that they're doing in Vancouver, yeah.
And they're one of my partners, you'll see, so they're part of you'll see, so that's how we, they're, they're probably doing it too. So we didn't, so, you know, your raft members are both, so it's, it's not so like, but they're one of my partners.
No, I'm like.
By the conference.
Restorative, and I was like, restorative, can't even. Like, I'm seeing awards and they're not all meshing together, it was unexpected.
So just one more piece on that, First Nations are in Canada and they're, you can put it together now?
Yeah, I can, I, I saw the, um, we acknowledge the gratitude that we're living in, working on the last year, traditional territory of the. And then they listed the First Nations group that. Yeah, that the land was, was belong to, um. Do we have a technology?
For you.
Huge. Top page of your public work, like there's not a whole lot else still on this page, other than a title, really great arrow shot and, you know. That statement, so I, I, I think that speaks to where, you know, their, their goals are, and that's, it's amazing that. We get to be a part of that, that they, you know, look out into the world instead of that, or moving to go to. To get some, some information and some assistance, so.
I think it's a really rich bridge to have too, because the book bans and they, like what's happening. Around books and, and control and book banning, everything is happening in Canada as well, um. And so having that bridge is really, I think, valuable, so thank you for doing that.
I have a question about the restorative practices conference and just if you're. Uh, in any position to ask a little bit more about it, about who we would hope would attend the conference, for instance?
Most definitely, uh, well, community members and anyone who has any curiosity, this will be our fifth. Annual, we skipped a year, um, because a national conference was last year here in Chicago. Um, but this will be the fifth year that we're doing it and our theme is building communities, so it'll be a two day, it'll be on January the nineteenth and the twentieth. Um, and day one will be focused on some of the restorative practices that we're doing here at Oak Park Public Library, some of our community partners, Oak Park Township that will be presenting, we have them booked. Um, and then we have few staff members, uh, that will be presenting as well. Day two will be focused on the reentry, um, the returning citizen population, so we're working with Bridge to Freedom as well as. As, um, I wanna get this right, ex-cons. E E E C, it should be on the report, I can't. Yeah, um, so we're also working with them, Tyron Muhammad, he is, this is a national organization. He is a returning citizen, he created a national organization that is supporting, um, returning citizen populations, so he'll be the keynote for Saturday. Um, I'm not sure if he's in the morning or the evening, but he'll be the keynote for that, uh, that day, uh, we'll have. Hoping to have artwork from returning citizens in the archive, we have some logistics to work out, I'm currently working with Alex Skinner. With that, just trying to see if we can make it happen, um, so you're all welcome to come.
Thank you, so thank you.
And just a few more highlights, because we have a lot to go with this, so I won't hold you too long, so, um, if you look at, um. Some of the highlights from August, uh, the total impact returned in person, and I don't know if you saw this, it was reported, actually it's happened, um, it was in person, so I thought that was pretty exciting. Um, I know we talked a lot about environmental, um, resources and programming that the library is doing, so I'm looking at you today, I hope you saw the report, it's very environmentally heavy. Uh, with Christina Porreva, I think that's how I say her name, her last name, uh, leading us as our sustainability coordinator. Uh, so I hope you make note of those things, uh, and then summer reading wrapped up in August. Um, there was, there was, uh, a fewer sign up, but, um, a higher number of people actually finished and will actually participate, so that was good to see. And, uh, we also had the adult summer reading program for, um, like an outward face of one of the first time in a long time, so that's also exciting too, so, um, thank you to the teens that put that together.
So I just wanna note that my son refuses to take his reading beads off of our answer, that's why they do it now. Um, he is super proud of them and shows them off to everyone who comes into the house.
That's awesome. Any other questions, um, about like the stats, they're, they're pretty steady, um, they're still good, um. So again, I won't take up too much time unless anyone had any questions, I can hopefully have a chance to look at that, um.
I mean, I don't have any questions, but I guess I'll leave when we get to the budget. Again, my brain thought this year, some of the online resources and. Those materials are gonna drop back a bit as we open up, not seems too, not happening.
People love those things now, now we got used to them.
I know, I mean, I'm, I'm guilty, guilty of that, um, so are we looking at? Additional resources, like expanding, what's on there, okay?
And, and, um, you know, the prices go up too, and what people aren't using, they charge slightly before use minutes, so yes, there's definitely investment. In more digital resources because they are popular, we use the whole people and use them, and now they do, which is great. And they, you know, they said that to say there, so absolutely.
Yes, she has core.
Yeah, and then, um, the dishes and terminations were there, um.
And, and if summer turnover is.
Yeah, October is sad, um, yeah, um, leaves us for the summer, so thank you, so they're, for their service, they're great to have, understand. And that, and that's, that's pretty much it. Any questions, any other things, and comments?
We'll go into our financials, uh, report, which is page twenty five.
Are we really expecting December first or just being thoughtful?
It's based off of. What the, the county is planning to do. They have not announced any plans, plans to further delay, but it's already, so, you know, going out late, you know, so.
Yeah, I just don't like contingency planning at the eleventh hour, I'd like to do it at like the tenth hour.
I get it, I think, I think we're. Yeah, I think it's gonna be. I think it's gonna be fine, I think, I think we're gonna see the same, we're gonna see that, that timeline. It's also money for the cap. You know, and they're not gonna wanna.
Am I speaking correctly that for, when our revenue, if it's, um, exceeded the budget by. Like if we're at a hundred and thirty-five percent, then we're something in good shape, water.
Yeah, yeah, of course, we're, we're, we're in a good solid, solid position, you look at our cash available on hand. Um, even if the money comes in in January, we're okay, of course, we want it to come in in December, but if it comes in next fiscal year, we can weather that. But what I just wanted stuff up here to mention was that, um, it appears Cook County has said that, um, the tax bill will be issued in November, the December first due date. And, and typically because a lot of homeowners in Oak Park pay their, uh, taxes through their escrow accounts, we expect to receive. A significant portion of what's due to us by the end of December, so.
Yeah, they start coming in, in November.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because it's. Because it'll, the bills, they'll start coming in once the bills notices hit, get to the banks, get to the mortgage companies.
And then there's, and there's, yeah, a couple of weeks for it to get from the village to, to us, to, yeah. Cook County gives it to the village, village just passes it along to us, just wanted to.
Why is Billy going back to his seat, isn't he gonna walk us through this entire budget?
He'll be back.
And then, are there any questions about the dispersment journal? Which begins on page thirty eight. And. So. Concludes. On page seventy-two. There are no questions, is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, those who favor say aye, those who oppose say nay, this approved, thank you. Going on to additional reports. Um, I go.
Christina, did you want to do something?
Yeah, I can try, I, um, hi, everybody. I, okay, so we, we talked about nominating a president last time, or two times ago, I suppose, and we were holding up. Until D ninety-seven, um, had their placements for committees and they still didn't have them last time, so we're holding up on the president. Position still, we'll probably decide next time. Um, we're still talking about having this event in the fall or probably winter now, highlighting mental health supports. And we kind of talked about how we want that to be framed and what that might look like, talking to different program staff, so. Um, yes, we will be in touch, Jocelyn, because I think we, we wanna tap into all the resources that the library. Um, offers and, and display that for the community, but we're kind of still in the very early planning stages right now. Um. We talked about how, I, I mean, we had like a short shareout for all of the different government bodies and so, um. Folks talked about how they're going through the budgets and all of that process. They, the others were really excited to hear about how we're pursuing legislation, taking away the uncompensated part, so, um. Several of them asked about the details and kind of like how they could support and how they might also, um. Replicate that for their own, their own boards, that is on. Deck, and then, um, there was a lot of support just around like the library in general, Suzanne shared about. What, what has been going on, and so everyone was really, I, I mean, I think it also speaks to like, not everyone is very aware of what is happening, I think, and. And so when it is shared, everyone is like, oh my gosh, um, how can we support you all, so. There's a lot of just community members loving the library and feeling awful that you all have this, that you're dealing with. Um, I think that's all I had, Suzanne.
That's, that's the main thing is, and when we were just talking about the mental health app, I was like, oh, that would be great to bring in, you know, um. And we, one of the things when we talked about the mental health, um, event was making sure that we. Approach it with this idea that there's a continuum of mental health and that it's an inclusive kind of conversation around it, um. And, um, you know, all the different governing bodies have, have different approaches and different resources. Um, and so we're figuring out kind of whether it's gonna be like a resource fair or, you know, like, you know, what's the best? Kind of avenue for that, um, but I definitely was like, oh, yeah, let's, let's, um, let's get that information in there, so. Yeah, I think it's, um, as long as we approach the topic respectfully from all the, um, the parts, I think it could be a really useful. Event for the community, so.
I was not able to attend to my wife's broken foot. Everything, uh, we can, Jocelyn was.
I, I wasn't able to say that, I don't remember why, but Lori went, I had a meeting.
You did.
Yeah, yes, um, I don't know, did you have anything to share and then maybe also my friends too? Well, I can't hear you, I forgot that I went.
They did the, um, they were talking about the rollout of their, um, equate the villages. DEI surveys that they're doing and how they're gonna, um, share the, um, uh, results back, that was the main topic of discussion. What their plan was, um, and then the friends, Jocelyn, I don't remember.
I don't think we had any major highlights, it was like a basic report, we talked about the, the partnership that we were thinking about, but, you know, we weren't gonna do with them.
The library steward.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but then other than that, I know as I was waiting for this, it wasn't a lot, I think it was just a standard reading.
Sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't memorable.
Because we got the donations, right?
Well, we talked about open books and the impact of open books on, um, the book sale. Um, you may have seen in the Wednesday Journal, the, the article about, um, our new bin and. They went from every two weeks to every week to twice a week because they can't keep up with all the donations that we're getting. And so we wanted to address that issue with the friends because, you know, we're not sure what the impact on the fair collection will be. But I don't have any concerns, I don't think, I feel like. If Parkers read and wanna donate so many books, I think they're gonna be in good shape too, so that was just a, uh, I just wanted to reassure them. I think the fair will, will continue, uh, successfully, um, and then Russ did, uh, reach out to Jocelyn and me because of the Newberry. Um, book fair isn't gonna be happening, um, anymore, they've decided to not do it, and he wondered what the impact on our fair would be, so. We might get more people coming to our fair.
And I think they're having a bingo, they're working on, do they talk about?
Oh, they're doing, um, they're, they're wanting to have more events. Um, in the, in the interim before, uh, the volunteers come in for the fair, so they're doing get togethers, they're having a maze, uh, bingo event to. Um, socialize with the volunteers then and kind of keep them interested and engaged, so I think that was it, was that.
I was still thinking of more than one book fair a year, is that still, or is that? Cause I know it's a lot of.
Yeah, I think they're gonna stick with the one, and they had such a good result this year. Where they, they increased their returns over the previous year, and I think they're worried about diluting it, there was talk about it, children's fair versus the adult fair. And I think, um, uh, but I think they're gonna stick with the plan and we just keep fine tuning it, um. It's going well.
It was amazingly successful this year, so.
Yeah, they've shrunk the overhead so much that the, the gains are so much greater than, than at the high school. It's, it's pretty incredible when you think about the investment. That we spent all those years. So, yeah, it's working out.
It's interesting to me that you're saying they, they, they wanna do more events and have people engaged throughout the year because one thing I noticed that at the Juneteenth. There were a lot. Of friends there. They had a really strong showing. And it made me realize that. There may be potential there for more kind of support and engagement.
Oh, yeah, I think they, they have a huge core reserve. I mean, when we saw who they brought out in for the fair itself, it was just amazing. Um, how many people are interested in that and supporting that? So, yeah, I think. Right, there's, we, they wanna create opportunities so that um, why not maximize people who are willing to help the library?
You know, I think people, I think the community really is. Our community loves our library and wants to support, especially I've been hearing that you all, you know, going through tough things.
I think, yeah, so more than ever, yeah, there, there's some definite opportunities there.
Yeah, yeah, thank.
Thank you. I was Dominican University. Asked me to be on the panel for like to know center of community from like, um, you know, from a library standpoint. So then to talk about how they could um have us, you know, partner. So I have a meeting at the, um, the end of this week. Uh, talking about even having classes here or having a scholarship just for our team and that kind of day or. Cuz they wanna engage more with the community. They don't wanna be behind the ID wall. Um, and so, and just, you know, be removed from the community, so that's where it's.
It sounds like you're fine tuning our hound eye.
It's been. It is not like it was under its previous uh years. Is, it is much more. It does much, much more beneficial to all the participants than it was uh under previous administrations. So, all right, uh, Planet Green.
Planet Green, I was not able to attend last Thursday's meeting, but Matt uh was there and he introduced Christine Correa. And her report is in our report here that I. Does Matt have anything to say?
Uh, just a couple of things, um. Yeah, we did. Uh, this was the first meeting that Christine was able to attend. She's been here. In this position for about six months and Planet Green has been hearing the updates that she's been doing through, through uh, you know, my report, um, but. I've never seen a group of people so. Already accepting of someone they've never met. It was, it was, it was a very warm introduction for Christine, so that was, uh, that was good. A lot of talk about residential solar opportunities. There is, uh, the village is hosting a forum on electrification um at Maze. I think it's. Fifth. That Thursday, Thursday, I think it's this Thursday, uh, next Thursday, um, from six-thirty to eight. And we talked a great deal about the annual um. Planet Green uh forum, the ones that you're meeting, host at the library, and the idea now is to. Uh, last year, in the years past, it's been a morning event. Everyone shows up at, at times. That's being shifted towards the afternoon to get more youth involvement, so uh, looks like it's going to be uh after school with, with, with the hope to get. More school kids to show up and participate.
At the uh, there was an international uh meeting um on climate thing. That was in Sharm El Sheikh last year. And we actually had a couple of uh Oak Park High School students attend that. Interestingly enough, the next one is going to be in Qatar. And it is hosted by the Minister of Energy, the oil energy, which is gonna be kind of weird for it to be. A climate change conference, but we shall see. Qatar does a lot of strange things.
Like not have brilliant. Real enforcement of any kind of building code.
How do students get chosen to go? How do students get chosen to go?
Uh, Gary Kunin somehow has found a funding source. And then uh, there's an open um application process and I don't think it's done through the high school. Because I think it's actually open to students who aren't just at OPRF. And uh, so I, I will find out. But uh, it, it was really quite remarkable that the, the students in this last conference actually gave a talk here in the veterans room. And it was really exciting and, you know, they got to sit and talk with Al Gore. You know, it was just e- exciting for them and to be in Sharm El Sheikh. But uh. And the, the new generation has got a very different view from the oil minister of Qatar, I'm sure.
Thanks, guys. And I've already touched on the friends, so we'll then move on to unfinished business. Uh, the draft. For our. So we have in, in uh, to the package, but we also have a hard copy here.
So, um. We have, we had especially in August. Um, so that we uh settled on four values, as you remember, we worked through those. Uh, so those are included. Uh, and so we added the anti-racism back to the core column. Uh, we kept the umbrella on top as discussed, as we've said, having goal. And then, um. Stephen and I worked together to talk about what the. The statements are the we statements and then we worked with Valerie um to tweak them and to, she helped us to um also just realize. When we come up with the we statements, we have to make sure we can do outcomes and then do venerable like action items with it. So she, she helped us um kind of trim it down a little bit because. We realized we didn't wanna say stuff like, we're going to solve racism. Oh, okay, well, that is good, but. I don't know how we got to that and I don't understand, you know, so.
Exactly, it is an aspirage.
It is, but we wanna make it like. We wanna make an outcome and a limited goal. And so, um. There's three of them also and she also helped us pair it so it matches the other ones cuz we have like seven or eight and the other ones have like three or four. So also to pair it with the ones we have. Uh, to be, you know, to have them similar. And then um, it'll get, so we said in August, I mean, August, in October, they will come back with the last part. Which will be um, the outcomes, which may, may or may not be similar because the outcomes are kind of like the shooting priorities that well enough. Where you can use them again, but um, it's not too new. Look at them again also if there's something to change. And then um, our departments will have the action items to share with you in October. So I just, I didn't wanna have the whole meeting over again, but if you had anything, like I, I just thought, I don't know, I, I could jot down what you have. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know, Matt, your email.
Yeah, I would say, um. Or. Yeah, cuz we can, we can find ourselves like, like spinning down like rabbit holes a plenty. Uh, on, on this again this evening and we still have to get to the budget. Um, so I would. Suggest that any suggestions. Uh. Related to this would um send to Jocelyn um directly. Um, on that and she will look with uh her team on that.
Yeah, Valerie's coming next to our next leadership team meeting to work with us again, so she'll be our facilitator. And uh, so that might be a good deadline if you get it to us on that's, let's say, uh.
Okay, thank you.
So if we get it to us by Tuesday.
Yeah.
Do you have any updates?
Yeah, you could, yeah.
Or um suggestions, recommendations, edits?
All right. That sounds good.
And then we had, um. We had Freedom of Information Act um as a. Policy last time and we had a few edits that Maya asked us to do, so you'll see the edits added, but we just. I think the conversation last time, if I recall, we just wanted to make sure they're all there um and not trying to edit in the air. And so they. It's like, oh, yeah, we'll add it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there, so we have evidence now there are added um as captured, you know. The Zoom has been reviewed just in case to those that evening, so um, hopefully it's there. Um, and it's not, you know. Maybe just one more time, we can do it before we.
I think.
Can you hear me? Oh, I was, I was gonna note a few minor issues. I'm so sorry, guys. You are on page two. It says request is returned to the, and then. I thought that made sense to remove um Deputy Director Lori um. Home uh William because that could change. And we don't wanna keep revisiting, but you also cut out the library's Freedom of Information Officer and so it just says the library's returned to the. And then it has an email address, so that doesn't. Really make.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna note that my, that we should un-cross off the library's FOIA officer.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, keep those first three words. I, I noticed that too.
Okay, thank you. And then the other, um, the other minor thing was the bullet point starting at the bottom of page. Two. Uh, and going on to page three, um, just to make them consistent with the bullet points above.
Oh, I see.
So we can put capital T, yeah, and capital T, the requested records are stored, blah, blah, period. Then capital T, the requested records, just because above they are all periods. Below, those are. Yeah. Um, so just for consistency sake. And those are all separate.
Yeah, and that, and that could be cleaned up by staff.
That can be cleaned up by staff, yeah.
Yeah. That's, yeah.
Thank you, noted. So you wanna agree with it or do you wanna?
I'm, I'm comfortable approving it. I just wanted to note this.
Is there a motion to approve um as presented with the edits just discussed?
So moved.
Moved by Maya. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Suzanne. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. It is. It's approved? Thank you, everyone. And then now. Off to. Uh, budgets, draft two.
Billy, I have a question.
Yeah, what's up?
Um. What's going on with our workers' health insurance and why is it a down by fifty percent for next year?
It's not. It's actually going up. Um, the cost of, the cost of our work compensation insurance is going, is increasing. However, the budgeted amount for twenty twenty-three was not was.
I'm sorry, that's what I'm looking at. Why didn't we budget thirty in twenty-three? And we're budgeting half of that.
I'm thinking, was it the most tactical way I can say? You have a different person sitting in a seat this year than what you did last year.
I know. Um, it just caught me off guard. I, I understood the fifteen as compared to the projection for this year is gonna be. Gold and change, so that, that makes sense. I just didn't.
Yeah. So let me, I'll get off my snarkiness and say, and say, yes, the actual cost for this year, and I had to verify this like three different times with our, with our. Uh, insurance provider, Lira. Um, and I said, yes, what are we actually projected to pay this year? I said, I know we paid twelve thousand six oh four. Are there any other payments? No. And what are we projecting it to go up next year? They said conservatively, look at like, I think it was. I think they said fifteen to fifteen percent, and so that's what we added to that number. Uh, it looks like it's going down if you're just looking at from budget year to budget year, but. The actual costs will be going, um, will be going up. That we're projected to go up.
So do you want us to start talking about it?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right. So there's a few points I wanna make. Um, the first point is draft two of. The budget is very similar to draft one you saw last month. It's very similar. We've fine tuned some of the numbers. Uh, we've done some more, more work there. Some numbers have gone up and down, but generally speaking. The draft you see in front of you tonight is similar to what you saw um last month. But I'll highlight a few changes for you though. It's like, what, what has changed? It's cause it's not exactly the same. Um, let's start with revenue first, so. We're still seeing the, the eight percent uh increase on the property taxes. Um, but the overall total revenue, so the total revenue line. Um, on page, on page eighty-two, yep. The overall total revenue line, um, in draft one, we had, we had revenue going up nine point one percent. The total revenue going up with draft two is nine point six percent. That's good news. We have more, more revenue coming in. Well, well, how do we accomplish that? Um. Specifically, there's two lines that we looked at in revenue. Um. One is community fund endowments. Community fund endowments is the fourth line from the bottom. Um, we, we got our actuals, like we can there are, are actual, um. I forget the word for them, but there are actual dispersments from those funds. We're gonna be, we're more than what we were budgeted for. Or more than what we're planning for the last draft, so they're slightly hi- higher, which is good. We're seeing larger dispersments from those funds. But the largest change in revenue is from a new line called sales. Sales, what's the library selling?
How'd you ask that?
Yeah, yeah, it's me, Justin, cuz it's me, Justin, I know.
So uh, we talked on this a little bit last time, um, but we are really moving forward with it. We talked about um trying to look at other ways to. Add to our budget other than just the property taxes. It's an important thing for us to do. It's something we should do. And so looking at that, um. We hear all the time that people love our, you told us several times how much security loves us and we do appreciate that and we, we feel that. Um, people ask us about our t-shirts. We have one all the time. They ask us about, um, you know, the things that we have on, um. And so from that, we agree are. We are looking to, at, at least at the very least, by the um holiday season to have a pop-up. In, in effort to have a permanent store or to sell um our swag, so to speak. So, um, we have t-shirts. Zipper hoodies, we're looking at hats, maybe scarves, posters, cups. I know it sounds crazy, but um, it, it really does work. I've, I've. I've been a deputy director at systems where, I mean, that, that's how you bunch your program and it comes to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, because we have the, we have strong community support to do that, um, and we, the up charge that we can charge for the items. It, it can generate a really nice profit for what we buy them for in bulk. Um, so it's an easy, like painless way to raise the revenue, so I wanna try it at least. Um, and like I said, we're gonna start with the pop-up. I want us to do, I, I would love to eventually have a store, but I'm not gonna let that um stop us because. And I'll have to wait to have a store built and figure out, you know, that, that takes money away. So it's talking to our teams. Uh, I appreciate um the brainstorm that's going on, but uh, we can sell it right at the desk, like right at the circulation desk, starting at May. Um, so we're planning to get, um. You know, we go store iPad, it's supposed to be iPad, um, and swear, so it's separate, so we have a separate revenue line to put it in. And so that's, that's what, um, we're, we're, we're gonna start with that estimate that you see there. Um, in, in terms of, my, my team was looking at me like I'm crazy, like, okay, I was like, all right, let's, I don't remember that you all didn't believe me.
Yeah, there was a lot of debate about, it's like forty thousand dollars, like we're adding forty thousand dollars to this revenue side. Are we gonna be able to make it? That's a conservative number. I think. You started a higher number and brought it down.
Um, but why we said that is, um, we're named Joey, um, and um, hammering this out and talking about this day to day. Like, if we, if we spent. So we, we expand about eleven thousand, we can make in, in buying merch. We can make how much? Twenty-six thousand dollars. And that, so that's, you know, and that's keeping the estimate low. So if we can do that at least twice. That's why the forty thousand was there. So like I said, it's a good way, it's a good place to start. We'll do other things too. We're also thinking about um doing passports. I don't know if you go libraries or do. Um, uh, passports at the libraries. I've also done that. Um, I've seen that generate um six figures in um revenue for libraries. You get the government, the US government pays you thirty-five dollars for. You get the government, US government pays you thirty-five dollars for reinvestments.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, um, it is another revenue generating. So we're looking at other ways besides. How high can they give us taxes all the time? Uh, we do have to face this, we love, but um we also want as more other, other revenue happens. So that's, that's the story behind it.
You guys are a factor in like making us work in the free extreme, you gotta get it done right off the scent.
A virgin, yeah, virgin.
Although projected swag.
Yeah, so that, that was the big major change on the re- the revenue side.
Um, I'm sorry, can I ask, uh, this is a silly question. For the folks who actually work at the circulation desk, are you came?
Yes, so we had that meeting last week, because I asked that question. And they said, yeah, I mean. I mean, right, and it's not that they're unused to collecting money, because we don't have fines in the norm, but when people damage a book. Or people um lose a book, they're already, they already have that skill set, they're already doing that. So um I did have a meeting to talk about that, and I wouldn't, I didn't want to see about it. If they're like, oh.
Yeah, it sounds a lot like retail, which, which is not.
But it's with, it, it, the idea is to house it at that desk, which has some of those. Same kind of skill sets. I, I used to be in the circulation manager, so that, that is the, you're doing that kind of customer service similar to it. Um, so I did have that conversation, um. But it'll be kept separate, we won't use, could we talk about that too? Could we use the platform we already have? Like when we accept the money, it will, we're not gonna do that, it'll be separate, so it'll be, um. It'll come in, so we'll call bingo that way. But I think we have to at least try, and I think it's a good way, I said, I, I, I thought of it because people do ask us so often. Um, that um, the hip hop could do that in a way, I, I, so many people are like, can I buy that shirt? Like, I couldn't even sell it to them for the one for sale. Um, and we often wear shirts when we go to conferences and stuff like that, and we're out, people ask that too. Uh, and so um when we talk about a way how people can support us, that, that'll be another topic that we can have. That's come a few times, like what can people do? Um, I think people will love to wear that in solidarity, and have, you know, a library for everyone shirt, and then it's going to a good cause, not going for nothing. To support libraries.
One of the great ideas of having this at the circulation desk or two is that whenever you get a receipt. Or the books you check out, I don't know if you've noticed, at the bottom, it says how much money you've saved by taking books out of the library.
It sounds like this will be a different system. This will be a different system, so it won't have that same.
And quite often, the person at circulation will say, you know, and they'll say, well, how much do you think you've saved? And it'll be like five hundred eighty-five dollars, she'll say, hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cents, and that's the right time to do the act. Yes, how many t-shirts would you like?
I think these are great ideas, and I really, I'm excited about the passport one too, cause I know there's some local. Libraries that do it, and I've heard really good things about the ease, you know, nobody likes to get a passport. Um, so I think it also would be a real service to the community, and I also, also think. We would get people from outside of Oak Park, which is kind of a neat idea as well, so that's exciting to me. Thanks.
We definitely wanna support that. It, it's very involved, and it's a, it's a long thing to start. But um, yeah, I, I agree with you, Christina, like, and we had a good location for it from location, um, so hopefully we can.
We just, we just did that process in our house, and it was. It was an elongated process. They are not equipped fully. We would need to have someone to explain the process. In a, in a friendly manner, everyone would be able to print forms that they needed here, so when you would ever mess them up, you're not running. Ironically enough, to the library to pick up the secondary copy of the forms. Um, but also, it's, it's a little bit of an equity issue, because. I was very fortunate, the amount of driving around I could do to get the proper photo with the proper background. Then, you know, drive back to, you know, but we're on public transportation. If we're able to do the photos here and do the processing there. That definitely makes getting passports far more accessible and far more.
So hopefully we can, I, you know, I don't, they also like, they tell you if you're a good location. So, you know, they'll have to say yes, but I, I feel like we could.
But you're right across the street.
So, but we're gonna explore it at least.
I, and I think it's, I, I think you're absolutely right. It's worth that pursuit. It makes sense that it's, I mean, it is a substantially credible document. That it makes sense that there is. In a long, you know, a substantial process of getting established to be able to do it, and that makes sense. I do, I do appreciate your, the, the staff's time and commitment to pursuing that, which could then, you know, once it's established. Benefit the library and its company.
Um, back to the, back to the spec competition. Um, I know you're talking about having this run through a separate financial.
PPO as well, uh, point of sale.
So would we be able to do this when we do outreach on the book bikes? Like, would we be able to take a?
We probably could. I wanna try the pop-up at least for the holidays, so we can find out what we don't know, what we do know, what we're doing right. I wanna start with five items, and I think that's a great idea.
No, I, I remember there was a special book fee that you could only get this year when you encountered the book bike. It would be really fun if there was.
And the other thing I like about it is having a square that is cashless, so then that keeps things safe too. You don't have anybody trying to. You know, grab, or um you just keep it gaseous. Um, and uh we, like I said, we wanna start with about five items. Um, we've been looking at display cases, so people can see it when they come in. So uh we also looked at, um, a, a company reached out and. For the tags on the back of your license, that's something they have libraries do, but I'm pretty kind of just that, they said. You don't really make a lot of problems with that. It's the little thing where you get like November twenty-two, three, or.
License plate registration.
That wasn't, if, if, you know, you didn't really get a big bang for the buck for that, so, but. I'm just sharing that to share that we're looking at other revenue sources, uh, I think it's worthwhile, um. And then we can slide them in, so I, I don't wanna be heavy-handed with it, but just things that people already asks about and things that we use to our community. So it's a good one for everybody, so.
I think it's an excellent idea, and I love how, you know, kind of dovetails with the community asking. How they can be simple and wanting to be, and, and actually getting people, more people in the community aware and engaged, because then people are wearing them. They can say, oh, if you've heard this way, oh, the libraries in the country, oh my gosh, you know, and, and have those conversations. So I think it's an excellent idea. I have a couple logistical questions. And that comes from, um, like I was at ALA, and there were Freedom to Read t-shirts that I wanted desperately to buy right there on the spot. Don't hold on my body, wear it the next day at ALA, right? And you couldn't, you had to order it, it was buy, you know, it was a, a. They, you just were ordering um piece by piece, and, um. And then we got, with the, the discount was still gonna be okay for a certain period of time. I just missed it. I never, I never ordered it, and I desperately wanted it right then. But on the other hand, there's cash out, oh, right, to have a bunch on hand. So kind of how do you, have you kind of worked through, maybe you haven't gotten to those steps about how. How much, you know, kind of inventory you'll.
If, if we're going to put forty thousand dollars in the revenue line, you're gonna have to add some expense to buy that product, right? So, but, and we've added that section to um, to the bottom of page, I think it's eighty-two in the, in the report back up to the bottom page one of the budget. There you'll see store, it's like the second section from the bottom. It says store, so purchasing general merchandise. Get a lot of twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase general merchandise. I mean, according to what Jody's numbers, if we were to sell all twenty-five thousand, if we sold all the merchandise that we bought, we would make way more than forty thousand dollars. Again, we're being conservative. You can't count on selling every single piece, and so, especially with the first, first year. Um, but also in the general merchandise, yes, there's cash outlay for, for that. Um, but also as you're selling things, you also have to collect sales tax, um, and in here in Cook County in Oak Park, it's ten percent, so. We added the sales tax line of four thousand dollars based on forty thousand dollars of sales, so ten percent of forty thousand. So tho- those are, those are, that's kind of like, this is where we're gonna catch those expenses, um, in the store section here.
So you are thinking of having inventory that people can buy.
But we're keeping, we're trying to be conservative with it. So like you said, the objective is not to have a whole bunch of inventory. And so we all have so much swag ourselves, so you see us with hats, scarf, and a hoodie, and every color, just like, okay, so why don't you have it? We're trying to make it, because we do wanna sell it. I'm not saying the pop-up is the only time, but I, I'm just saying, that's where we wanna start. Just so we can kind of get a feel for it, see how it goes. I think holidays would be a great time for that too. Um, and, you know, if we do it all year, and like I said, it's very bulky, it was at the desk. I really liked that idea. Oh, Lauren reminded me of that, I was, as I was trying to build a store in here, I was like, no, let's have the best stuff. Um, it's just, you know, they're already there, and I, I love what you said too, because, you know, somebody might see somebody, but they don't know where to get it. They might have been in the library forever. Um, so, you know, that's, that's, it is another way to attract and have people there to support and have people come into the library, um, if they haven't been in a long time too. So hopefully that'll do that too. We also. Um, have been thinking about having like even a pop-up coffee thing. We, we, I know we talked about having a vending machine. And what I mean by that is utilizing the businesses that already exist and have them have pop-up spaces. We noticed a coffee shop, that buggy twenty-two that is outside, we can talk in that and just say. Um, and that, that's a female or, um, own business or one lone business. And like she said, for instance, she said, I don't, I don't walk aside in the winter time. So that could be a pop-up where we do something, where we do some kind of share with them, with the profit that they make, maybe like ten percent, five percent, whatever. And then we're supporting small businesses in the community that is opportunity to change and shift it. Maybe it's free coffee, maybe it's fair rounds. Uh, so that's some other thing we've been getting about. I don't know if you noticed, um. Uh, and it, it doesn't have to go to run from touring other places, just really quickly, I don't know if you like this. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be inside of a store, like when we go to other libraries, they've kind of just created it, just, you know, they put a, they put a section together that's second L. Uh, we saw one that was like in the children's apartment, like how smart is that? You know, you just there with your kids, you're hungry. Um, retired, we need the coffee, it's right there. Not saying we could do that, but there's, there's some options. We have a, we have a very vast. Um, lobby, a lot of space in the two that could be activated, um, some more. So that's something else we've been tentative in looking at too, just. If we can have a pop-up, not just, not trying to open a retail space again necessarily, um, but we do have spaces to look at, um. We did end up posing the backdrop in the front. Uh, we have, you know, we had an accident there, and it's been pretty dangerous, um, but if you look, that's a room. If you look at that, it's a room. So I can, I don't know, I have a vision of very clean kind of visions, where you can. But that's me, that's me dreaming, baby. I don't, I don't know if that'll necessarily work, but that's, that's just an option. And I, again, I shared this last, the long round, it's just how, like, how we're talking about as a team, you know, those, you know, just do whatever. It's a part of our question.
Yeah, so that's one of the major changes for this, the draft of the budget you see in front of you. Thank you, Jocelyn. And the other item to point out. Would be, yeah, the num- the numbers have shifted around a little bit, um, total, total expenses for operating, which is on the third page of the budget. About half, a little over halfway through, uh, total expenses operating. Um, in the uh last month's draft, draft one, um, total operating expenses were increasing by seven point two percent. In this, in this draft, you see they're increasing by seven point four percent. Most of that's driven by, you know, the addition of that, um, uh, the store. The store, so. And then, you know, I'm happy to talk about any line item in here, um, but what I, what I wanna drive home tonight is, you know, I've, I've. I've been sitting with this, this eight percent number, you know, this, this eight percent. Property taxes, property tax increase of eight, eight percent for the library, and, you know, I, I know that's a big number. I mean, I'm, I. I live in Oak Park myself, and. When I, when I think about it, I say eight percent, so what is that really? Like, what is that really? Is that the average home owner in, in Oak Park? Uh, if you look at the average, we've ju- we've done the math. You can, at the bottom of the, of the uh third page, you'll see that the cost of a library card for a household. Would be increasing from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, would be increasing about thirty, a little over thirty-seven dollars. Thirty-seven dollars. Say that again, thirty-seven dollars. So you say eight percent, eight percent sounds like this, you know, like, we're so used to hearing numbers closer to like three percent, you know, or. Or what about like less than five percent? We're talking about thirty, thirty, thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents to the average, average, um, cost of a library card. Or, or the, la- average cost. Of the, of the library, and the increase, sorry, the increase, the average increase of the cost of a, of, per household.
It's per household?
Per household, yeah, assuming there's some assumptions made in that, um, you're trying to average it. Uh, but assuming, you know, the population fifty-one thousand, one oh two. An average of two point three five people per household. That each house is paying five hundred and eight dollars, would, would be paying five hundred and eight dollars per, um. Per year for the, for the library, and which is an increase of a little over thirty-seven dollars.
Okay, I, I think I was confused.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Right, yeah, like I, I thought that, I thought that the. I thought that that number that used to be forty that was now, we're projecting would be five hundred and seven dollars. Was the, you know, like what is obviously, yes, the cost of library cards would be per person.
Yeah.
When you're saying it's per household, which is.
It, it's, no, it's, it's right, that it's, it's, it's a per household, um, number is what, is what that's.
Tax parcel practically.
If each tax parcel, parcel were equal.
Right, yeah. Let's say average, and so when we say that, you highlight that, because we hear, we heard you, we hear the trepidation of having to explain to your friends and neighbors. Like, oh my gosh, why are they asking for so much? Let's put me down, and we're talking about it, we're talking about thirty-seven dollar expenses versus the year before. To give us the eight percent, so we're not giving it to our reserves. Um, to the tune of almost half a million dollars every year. We still are doing it, but it's, it's less. And we wanna get to a point where we're not doing that, so with this inflationary budget, uh, inflationary environment that we're in. It's just a deep pace, um, you know, that's hardly recently like a percent, but, you know, that's a talking point you all can say, maybe. We're talking for a certain dollars, uh, average.
This might be digging into the weeds, but I wanted to go back to digital content, because again, I think that's something that. But not that it's new, but the thing I need so much now, I, I see the increase. Um, is that, again, what we were talking about, the inflation now, are these. Are more expensive options post-COVID, or does this account for expansion in. What will be accessible or in the upward?
Yeah, Virginia, just to, just to clarify what line you're talking about. It's, um, you're talking about page two under library materials. That's increasing four point two percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I actually, I, I don't know if we would like to, to talk about that, that's her, her and her team people with these numbers.
Um, so in terms of, um, electronic resources, what you see in that line is what we project. Uh, because prices are going to go up, and so that does include that, but that also includes if we wanna add some more services.
Oh, so that's influence goals.
Yes.
Expecting an increase in the cost of what we are already providing constituents, plus. Making way for whatever new fun things are gonna come out this year, very much, okay.
And would you say it's also, Captain, I hear Park say this all the time, that the awesome subscription is awesome, although, I hear, um. Machine talk about that too. Not that that's, she makes so much money, but like, in terms of it being a subscription.
Yes, um, so yes, prices do regularly go up, but we did see in the pandemic, when everyone found out. That electronic resources were so great, um, companies recognized that and decided, well. We'll raise the price a little bit. So yeah, we, we do keep, uh, very aware of that, but we always wanna give ourselves a little wiggle room. Just in case we do find some electronic resources that we think we need to add, or we've got patrons wanting to request.
Are there some that, that have been requested that you're expanding, adding?
Um, there is a, uh, new service that we would like to start, um, where basically you have like a digital collection. That's tied to a QR code, and so you could put that QR code, let's say, in a longer mat. And a person could scan that code, have a digital collection of magazines and books. And that would be available for you. So I do know that is one that we would like to start, and we have added that in there.
I was just thinking, I was like, you know, I don't wanna ask this for next month, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a shorter window. And you're at the conference, but perhaps in November, could we get kind of just. A, a presentation about our general digital content. Um, stuff that we provide, what has changed in the last couple of years for it? What we might be looking at, like this QR code.
What we might be looking at, like this QR code, other things we're looking at in the future, because. This is so much more of what we do now than what we did three years ago, five years ago. Ten years ago. It has changed a lot. There are services we have brought and added. I think I might be good that the board have. Handle on kind of. What the digital landscape of our services encompasses. So if it's possible for November, that's just something we can, you know, kind of, you know. Uh, so that we can be up to date on that.
Not to make Max ask bigger, um, but. I've, I've had a couple of questions from the community on, um. Access to education. One of the things I really loved was our access to learning, which. I have like five facility certificates and I know mine is not on any of them. I don't know down here. Um, but. I know that's not the only resource that we offer as far as continuing education. And post COVID, a lot of people have been trying to change industry or expand their career without having to go the traditional school track. So if we're looking at. The, the breadth and depth of our, our resources, like if we could also take a look specifically at order the continuing education resources that we're offering. And, and how we get them. Um, cause I know sometimes they're like. Mixed in with the other things that we're all, you're gonna, I'd like to call those out specifically for the community.
Gotcha.
Yep, we can do that.
As we think about revenue streams too, um. I would love to see a kind of a wish list that we would have, if we had the money. We would have a subscription to J Star or something like that. And how much does that cost? You know, this to, to know.
Mackenzie Scott, she's giving away their visas, this money.
I mean, it's just, it's like, okay, I mean, I would love to have access to J Store. But I'm not sure that really there are many people who would want it in our community, but I'd like to know how much, how much would that cost? Because there are potential donors out there. And I'd say, okay, this is something I'd like. Uh, us to try for a year, let's see if this, if this is useful. So what, what are your wish list?
I will go back and talk to my team. I'm sure there's quite a few.
Any other question?
Before we get back into the other budget items.
The. One that I have on here, and I don't know, is the community engagement.
Okay, uh, I'll just put a pin in that position. I mean, I was just a few requirements for her. Before we. For digital stuff before we get back to it.
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay, good. I just want, I just want to keep her up there. Everyone to ask you one more thing. So, okay, Susan, community engagement.
Yeah, I just was noticing community engagement is going up. And I just love to hear that one about that. Cause I'm sure it's.
I think you've got a whole team of people here.
Yeah, so the community engagement increase puts that budget more in line with the other service areas. You'll see that children's adult and, um, middle and high school are all close to twenty five to thirty thousand. And they were only at fifteen. And that is to cover. Um, the festivals, presents at the youth teen parades. Um, expanded, we're going to have a second bike, expanded, um, programming related to the bikes. Um. The idea box is expensive and to do the exhibits in the way that, that want to envision them. So there's a lot of extra, um, costs for community engagement. So I thought that was a fair ask. To get them up in par with the other service areas.
The change programming is going up too by your fair amount?
Yes, um, so, um, Jenny Jackson, who was part of the community engagement team, has shifted to children's. To expand, um, family and early childhood outreach. So she needed a budget for her work. So that's. We increased children's to cover that.
Is there anything this, she shifted from community? To what?
She went to children's because some Jenny's work, she works with the preschools.
Hmm.
And it was, um, the demand is too great for one person. And so she needed the support of other children's staff to help her address that outreach. And then also built into the staffing asks, we're looking at making a full time conversion to get more early childhood help for children's. So that there will be a group, uh, on the children's team that can do the outreach. On, when she was in community engagement, she was the only one doing the early childhood. So that's why we made that shift.
So should we get new staff or should I get the supportive staff that's already there?
There's, there'll be a new physician. Um, a, a conversion of a part time staff, not which full time. And then, um, additional, um, help from the team that's already in children's. So it's just easier to coordinate that way so they can work together to fill the needs, um. Yeah.
All right.
I'm thinking.
I really appreciate this, this, the, having the staff. Here to be able to provide these quick explanations for these questions, you know. Not to say that you wouldn't have them, Jocelyn, but just like.
No, I would.
I guess. You know, like you would have a handle on it, but it's also just. It's a lot to keep.
There's.
To keep there. I just, it facilitates our discussions very nicely.
So we shouldn't be worried about the gigantic amount of social services?
It's based on, on, um. What? Yeah, actual. So I, I believe what Rob, I don't know if I want to speak to this, but, um, originally we had talked about getting, we, we're going to have. Grants coming in to cover, or I'm sorry, we're originally going to pay for a lot of these services ourselves, but then we end up getting grants coming in. To cover the costs so that we can ship those, ship those, um, dollars.
Oh, so that explains why the budget last year was so much higher, but rather than it coming out of budget, it ended up coming out of. Brands are really similar.
Right, right, right. That makes, that makes sense. That's.
Yeah, also I'm doing more front end as far as pre screening or some things. So as far as a referral to the assessment. So I'm licensed, I can do the pre screening. Pretty straightforward. We save money in that way as well. There's still money as well with the Northwestern grant. We can provide stipend. Some other cool things. And there's an expectation that art will be supporting us for the digital. Um, mental health, um, resource that we'll have too. So there's just ways that. If we want to partner, we can get some financial assistance. I'm all for it.
Hmm. Yeah, I think because of Rob's work, I mean, we're able to ship those dollars and the other, other, other.
Can it? The dollars are shifting, they're not in services.
Not at all. Actually, I agree, so I'm sorry.
I was wondering about, so then in that case, I'm wondering about the, um. The, uh, how many of these grants are multi-year, I'm assuming, the multi-year grants?
Yeah, so there's a separate nine item, the Northwestern grant, we can utilize those funds towards grant specific. Programming, um, there's still funds in there to provide stipends for teens and things that nature and teen services, those, those, uh. Resources, financial resources are available for teen services as well because it's a partnership.
Okay.
So we really think about being good stewards of what we can do with those finances and also collaborate particularly with teen services.
I just, you know, I, I just, you know, we had, we've talked about before how we don't want the operational budget. To come out of grants. Often we don't want operational stuff to be too grand, maybe because if that money goes away. We don't want there to be a reduction in services. So which is, I, I guess I'm just flagging that for myself or for future boards or whatever, you know, like it is. You know, I'm sure we continue to get many excellent grants, but should that not be true or were there, yo, that wasn't asked to us and asked? That we be mindful that we don't necessarily lose to the service.
And, and monitoring, just to drive that point home, if you go back to the revenue side and, um. A few lines up from the bottom is where we talked, our budget for grant, grant revenue. Grant revenue projected at zero dollars. So again, anything that we received and, and what we've actually received or projected to receive. In twenty twenty three, nearly thirty two thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's like that.
Perfect.
It's coming in, but we're not necessarily counting on it. And that's one, that's one way we ensure we're not counting on it. It's our budget for the revenue.
Then how did this go down?
I don't want, I don't want to go down.
Social services.
So for instance, with the, with the pre screening is very expensive.
Okay.
So I cost about a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour.
Yeah, nice.
Externally.
Yeah.
So. We can set it up now where I can do the pre screening. And estimation goes over in Rush and then they, I'm, I'm specifically budgeting for just their part of that, that mental health assessment. And it takes a couple of years to figure out what works, what works, what doesn't, right? Uh, if I had the ability to do that and I do have a capacity. I'll be happy to do it.
Just to say one more time, you're not, it, and I think I heard Billy say this too, that you all, if I'm wrong, it's not. It, it's more accurately reflecting what you can actually use it for. We have, we have it already covered because we have the partnerships. So it was at twenty thousand. Were you going to spend twenty thousand in a year? No. And so this makes it more accurate lineup of what I pass, so it's not sitting there unused and it be allocated.
So the grant is zero because we're not, uh, we're not counting on new grants this year, but there are only grant funds.
Right. And, and like you said, Rob does such a good job doing that instead of budgeting for something that we're not going to use and it's sitting there, then, then you'd be like. Well, how was it? No, no, the money wasn't spent. And that's, it just was more like, what is that?
Yes, correct. It's more, it's more responsible forecasting of what the expenses will be based off how it's actually being used.
And not cutting it at all.
Yeah, right. And, and what was at that point, you just made for that one line as something, exercise that I've done for all of these lines, like looking at each line and saying, what do we, what do we, what do we? Have, what do we have budgeted for twenty twenty three? What do we project to spend? What do we need for twenty twenty four? What do you want to spend for twenty twenty? It's like this whole exercise for every line and through that discovered some shifting that needed to happen. Workers' compensation goes down fifteen percent. Social service program goes down. Um, children's programming goes up, you know, it, it, it just, we've had these up and downs because of the focus that we're taking on, on each line.
I thought workers' comp was going down. I thought those costs.
It appears, it appears that the cost is going down from, from one budget year to the, uh, next budget year. But the actual costs are, are, are going up. It's just. The, it was budgeted thirty thousand dollars for this year. We're actually going to spend a little over twelve thousand dollars.
Gotcha.
So I don't need thirty thousand dollars for twenty twenty four for workers' compensation. Um, I, I may need fifteen thousand, which. Fifteen thousand is still more than what we actually paid a little over twelve thousand for this year. So it is, the actual costs are going up. Budget year to budget year looks like it's going down because of the large amount that was budgeted. In twenty twenty three. It's.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot, but, um, but because of that little detail of looking at it, we have guarantee, we have some guarantees, we can. Breathe a little easier knowing that these numbers are more accurately reflecting what we're going to spend.
Completely, Billy, um, and, um, there's a, we, we had a more collaborative. Um, exercise and putting with much together. And so of course, that's what you said, I'm, I'm glad they could do, and that's why they are here to. So people got to say, well, Billy, to just put in numbers. He actually, we actually had conversations with people and said, what do we, was it looking like, why is it this way? Cause we'll get it one more time. Uh, what, you know, what do we need to bring up? What is the action? So I appreciate that. So just wanted to add that again too. So that's why it's a little different in the last.
Yeah, I think you're seeing it in real time. Like I know exactly who to talk to. And I, and I know about what they're going to say, but they're going to say a lot better than I can. Um.
We do.
Yeah. Um, so with that, with that being said, I think the, you know, what we're looking for here is. Um, we're going to present the third and, third and hopefully final draft in October, third and final draft, how to say it, third and final draft in October. Um, what additional? You know, um, questions or directions, like what, what do I need to hear? What does the team need to hear as we go back and work on this? Um. Uh. To bring, to bring this to you on October seventeenth, right? October seventeen, to bring, to bring the final version to you.
I'll jump off with, are there any line items related to external? Cost items like the IR, IRMRF insurance and such as that, that. We're still there. There is a possibility, small to large. That we will see changes based off feedback from those external sources.
Um, so speaking specifically about IMRF, we have the, um, preliminary rate already and, and. Um. With, almost without exception, of course, I say hate saying that because, but almost without exception, that preliminary, preliminary rate holds to, to the final.
Very strong history of those.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and, um. Uh, cause they, cause I'm rep knows that we're counting on that number they're giving us. So, um, and so that this, um. I'm a rate, the increase, the twenty three point five percent increase in that line, uh, is what I'm, what I'm expecting to hold, um, for the, for this year.
So I, I think what, what you have is like.
Other, other line, like you have a lot of question marks?
I don't. Waiting for perhaps to find another revision from, from a, from an outside source. Cause I mean, a lot of what our budget is, is. Generated internally, but there are items that.
Yeah.
Get fed in outside.
Yeah, based on setting, I.
Are we expecting anything on the expensive side?
I'll, I'll say I am not, and I'm, and I'm talking about the people section specifically. I, I am, I am not. And that's, you know, seventy percent budget. Let me just quickly confer with the team and say, are you anticipating other, any other, uh, largely changes? Which is, Linda and Jerry.
I would also put your last thing, insurance, like the top of the chain.
Okay, that, and that's what, that was on my mind. So that's the one that's always. It, it, and I can, it's like, again, it's, and it's anecdotal, this nagging thought in the back of my head that that is always. One of those numbers that. Fluctuates, that fluctuates up to the last minute. So, yeah, it looked like, Stephen, did you have something or did you just have a comment?
I, I saw you, it looked like you were raising your hand. So I just wanted to make sure I got it. I didn't want to leave you out if you had something to say. And, uh, Linda, when you mentioned insurance, you're talking under, under the administration section, like just the general liability insurance?
Uh, yes, the private package insurance.
Yes, so. So speaking with our, our insurance provider, uh, through Lyra, they had said to. Um, conservatively estimate for fifty, estimate, conservatively estimated a fifteen percent increase. And that's, and that's reflected in here. So we feel comfortable that, that this number will cover whatever increase actually, we see, whatever increase reactions. Thank you.
Um. The ninety percent reduction in technology projects, um, but. Seems to, in our capital expenses.
Yes.
Just, just yes.
Yes, yeah. Well, realizing the person who had to have answered this is Marchene and Marchene's on vacation. He's not even sitting behind me. So I'm like, well, now I'm thinking, well, what do I say about this?
Well, what, um, maybe if you capture maybe some conversations you had to arrive, because I think I remember. Like just kind of, uh, uh, along the lines of the same conversation that like. We asked Sack to come with ideas and they may have been this big and then we'll talk about like, okay. What, what can we actually do? What, what do you actually need? You know, can we do this another year? Can we write it down and find out the price of it? So. It, would you say that?
Yeah, yes. I mean, what, and, and thank you for, for buying me the time to reflect on what that conversation was. Um, no, when we looked at, so again, when we started looking, we did the draft, first draft of the budget. We talked about the leadership team. What we were discovering is, you know, when you start talking about the net, the net. Deficit in, with including, um, all capital expenses, I mean, you're looking at over a million dollars, um. Uh, projected, a, a, a million dollar deficit, over a million dollar deficit. And so we started talking about, well, what, yeah, like, like knowing that we can't do everything that we said we, we wanted to do. What, what, what can you cut? You know, relatively easily or what can wait till next year? And Marchene offered up, um, a decrease in, in, um, the, uh. Technology projects and, and equipment, um. To, I think, delay, push off one of the projects to next year, but also realizing that, um, it's not going to affect us like buying like equipment and supplies. So that's in the, that's in the, um. Operating side. So, so, yeah, it's just, we've completed up now. What this doesn't reflect and we don't have in front of you is, is a long list of IT projects that are completed over, you know, over the last five years.
I was just about to.
A lot of work that's hap, happening.
Yeah, I was just about to ask if there, there have been a set of projects that have just been completed.
Oh, like nearly constant.
Right, that gives us a chance.
And, and, yeah, we can take a piece of it. We're breathing a little bit, um, and then, but yeah, we.
Wait, sure.
We're projected to come back next year though, so. But it's just on the capital side, not on the operating side.
I wish you could capture some of that, you know, British report, like you did the overview.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think the only thing that makes me nervous is. Probably completely out of our control. And I know the leadership is taking it into account is. I just get this itchy feeling like some of the. Newer digital offerings are going to be more expensive than. We think because they are becoming so popular, because we are seeing a little bit more COVID activity again, um. Again, not, not anything that we can do about it other than just know that it's a possibility. Um, but I, I do worry about the market taking advantage of. People getting silenced again, or people becoming again more reliant on. Digital access to things and, and us kind of bearing the brunt of that financially for the community.
And that's something the library is talking about, like, what should we do together, like, do we come together? Um, you know, one thing Illinois does really well is act consortiums where we buy together, like Swan is an example of that, so let's try to get an island by ourselves, we have like sixty something other libraries. That we go in and we can get reduced prices, so that is a concern, because they do have us kind of, you know, they, they, they have our hands tied, because they know we need it and they know it's popular. Um, you know, even when you buy digital books, if you have to buy another copy, I've just checked out a certain other ones, it's not a physical book, it's nothing happened to it, it's still in the way. And, but they know that.
He said nicely, being with the money.
Right, so, it, it's a battle, but I, I think, Lee, you could, you would probably attest to, like, you will have done that research, and thinking of that budget and said, okay, what, what are you charging us for that next year? Uh, I know another thing, I know I've heard Marchene say, and again, I agree with him to it, because they have similar things in terms of adding digital products that have subscriptions is. Um, like, we'll ask, well, can you give us a three-year? How much does that cost with three years instead of doing one year?
So you don't get everything and we can do some other.
Yeah, yeah, and then we can pay it, or we can pay it in the year, pay it little by little, but the price ultimately is smaller, so we do things like that too, but.
To, to Matt's point, these were all sort of, you know, these were all sort of Christmas, Christmas element items.
Right.
About five years ago, where now they've become much more essential, and maybe there weren't three-year contracts that we could add to do part of, and there aren't these consortiums.
And our, our staff, I think, is, and if I, you know, and feel free to quote me, but it's like, I remember, like, having the conversation in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one of. Like, upping that digital number significantly because of this, you know, being ahead of it, so that, you know, like, they, you know. This will now be the first year that they are realizing they can go for more money. They've been doing it for the last few, so it's like. It, it, the, the line is going up from the vendors, but I think it is, it's not going up flat, so, like, the staff has seen. Kind of that trend, I think, has a, has a, hopefully has a sense, you know, speaking with their peers of where that line is, so, I, I get where you're coming from.
I know, I know, we think that our staff has done absolutely everything there is to do to make sure that these numbers are right. I just.
I'm, I'm just working to vocalize for posterity, like, so, you know, some of that, thinking that those of us at the stable who have that experience of hearing from the staff in previous years. Putting that out there for others so that they are aware that these are not just, you know, passing thoughts that we're having, that we, you know. We have experience at the stable from purely this experience, you know, from previous discussions of our staff being on this year after year after year. And doing an excellent job with it, and so that they can, so that our, our decision-making process is, uh, the information is clear here for us. And we feel comfortable because they have demonstrated that ability to be right.
Do we know whether financial increases have been like percentage-wise in the past, not on our budget, but like on the actual subscription costs, because I can't believe. If we're going to the community saying, we need an extra eight percent, if we were able to say like, and digital subscription, you know, the vendors that we're dealing with, this is a similar percentage. Um.
I'm sure we did get that, but I would, if, if you have, if you are talking about a talking point to that, too, other things we can't control are the insurance costs. The, you know, and we have to keep pace with our pay, um, and we have to keep our pay. In, uh, like, on pace, uh, with.
Yeah.
Inflation, and.
What's what was that on yours?
I, I, like, I, I'm gonna say that, like, why say, that's a digital thing, so we gotta do more, it is a piece of.
It's something that people can mentally grasp onto, they can see like, oh, this is, this is a, you know, the library isn't making anything off, this is the vendor that they're directly dealing with, the same with insurance, like. We don't get to make that insurance.
Well, I, I was looking at the natural gas hundred and eight percent in good sort of governance.
That's, you told this is another.
Yeah, and that's, and that's another thing that, like, every person, you know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know that.
It's, it's, it's something to be, alien to the current commerce, and this is, this is the libraries.
And we want to keep pace and not, they would start reserves, they try to cover, and, and try to, and we've been very conservative in asking for the increases every year. But I think even, you know, like, if I live in a village, like, they take, they don't take the three percent cap off and say, we're not gonna do that anymore either, we have to keep pace, um, learn the.
It has value, so. Of our.
I would just like that on something that feels a little bit more tangible, I think we've done a really great job of that this year, especially you, you've been talking directly to the community on a regular basis. I think taking some of these ideas that feel a little bit abstract, like, a budget for a library system and lessons, and, and breaking it down to, y'all, we gotta pay the gas bill too.
Um.
It was, is a, is a little bit more tangible, from what I'm trying to make.
Just understand, that's another thing.
Of course, so we're, like, ready some talking points for you all, and just have it, like, to give, um, thirty-seven dollars, the natural gas, I hear digital services, would that be helpful too?
I, I think so, things, things that we've taken before, like, if your Netflix went up, like, so did.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I feel like one of the talking points that I've been using is that post-pandemic, we're. We're seeing obviously, or returning to using physical uses, uh, physical materials, but we're not seeing a corresponding decline in our digital use, that skyrocketed during the pandemic, and I.
An expansion, not a reality.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not moving back, and I think that people understand that too, you know, like, that's, that's how everybody uses it like, you know, we're not using. Both, you know, and, and lots of.
Yes, of course, this statistics, if you look at them, there's nothing that's.
It worked.
And the whole, the whole thing, it's a whole band, and how do you. On there, the. There's also the point that, that's also something that's supporting people with disabilities, you know, in terms of, like, not just going back to in-person, but in-person and virtual. Right, for events, because that's something that was actually requested. Yeah, pre-pandemic, and.
So you have the items for it, you have the camera for that, and the microphone for that, yes, absolutely.
It's a, yeah, it's a new, it's a new way of doing things that is, for thirty-seven dollars a house.
For additional, additional thirty.
I sound like the, the ghetto.
I was gonna say.
You too, for the, just for thirty-seven dollars.
I would like to bring this back around, um, because are we, as a board, comfortable with the direction that staff has built in this project? And to prepare, you know, uh, us, you know, a, a version for possible passage on October seventeenth? Based on what we're seeing here.
I'm, I'm fully behind Billy in his thought that the next round will be the final budget, that it will be.
In spirit, you are.
Yes.
You'd be outside, but I do think this, so, I, I was curious, uh, I think you asked about the presentation about the digital materials, but you asked for that for November.
Yeah.
So that would not be pertinent to the decision.
No, but it's, it's just to, for our. Yeah, for our education in terms of, just to kind of, not necessarily as to what's changing budgetarily, but what is the current landscape of our digital services? Because I think it's, it's one of these things where it's changed, and it's, you know, and this is beyond, it's like, this would be like an expansive staff report of. Something that we've gotten from time to time about a particular area of what's happening, and I feel like, given our conversation about this and everything else that's going on. This is a good time to, to have that conversation and to, to get that as a refresher of, it's not just. Um, mango languages or a newspaper or a magazine, it is all, it's the things we have, all of us, and we still have all the research. You know, um, access, you know, all the journal, you know, you know, journal access that we have to pay for, even though the research was funded by government grants previously. And the authors aren't getting money from the subscription service access fees, and you can, uh, yeah, I have feelings about that. Um, especially as, after you, like, going through my mom's office and finding all of the medical journals and flipping through stuff, and it's just like, how much do these things cost and? Yeah. Um, so, yeah, so it was like, it was to kind of get our hands around, just so that we are all aware, because I think. I primarily am using, like, the e-audiobooks, because I.
No, I.
Oh, so.
The friends, um, you know, for my commutes, because I found it, it is better for my, my personal mental health than listening to podcasts, so, like, current event podcast. I prefer to listen to ebooks on, on my, on my train rides, I feel like I, it is better, it's been beneficial for.
But you should, I should talk to you, because I can, I do some ebooks that will break your heart, and then, it, it, so it'll be a lateral movement of my body.
Although, it's like, it's a lot of, it's, it's, it's all nonfiction, a lot of social justice.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's different, it's, it's like.
Um.
Yeah, um, but, um, so, but it's like, that's how I'm using it, but there's other people who may be looking at it at a different section of our digital thing, and so I may not be as aware of everything now.
Yeah.
So I think, so, to help all of us see the big pictures of our digital collections would be helpful.
But not, but not immediately, really.
Yeah, not, not, yeah, not, not, yeah, not, 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 not.
To sort of focus in on and celebrate, like, as winter is coming, we all know, that, and I think traditionally we do see even more digital usage. As we all get started, it might be nice for us to kind of focus in and, and reacquaint the community with. What, what you can. We'll be starting in thirty minutes.
So I'm trying to remember, to bring us back to the numbers, thank you, um, I'm trying to remember the, the chiller is in here, right?
Chiller two.
Yes, chiller, chiller two, so chiller one is, is included in the FY twenty twenty-three budget.
Right.
Um, and chiller two is showing up in the building improvements line, if you look at the budget.
On.
On page, yeah, yeah, third page of the budget, um, under capital expenses.
It's the big number.
Yeah.
That's why, yeah.
Yeah, so chiller two is included in there.
So is chiller one paid for out of this year's budget?
Um, it's, 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 it's not paid for yet. Right, it's not, it'll be delivered, um, in, in November, I think it's scheduled to be delivered, but it's included, it's, it's budgeted, budgeted, it'll, it's budgeted and will be paid for, it's as the plan.
Yeah.
Uh, for twenty twenty-three.
So it's chiller two.
Yes, chiller two is, um, roughly about, what is that? Is it roughly about half the cost of building improvements for twenty twenty-four? But, yeah, we've included a list, yeah, yeah.
Just sort of kind of tracking through the different pieces that contribute to this.
Yes, so.
That's a big.
Yes, and the, the, that's driving like that, so all of the capital expenses, um, you know, below the operating numbers, all our capital expenses. Um, are just gonna drive, like, the deficit, big, we're gonna dip farther into our, our fund balance, um, to, to pay for those items. Which is, you can't continue to keep doing that, we can, we, we'd have a healthy fund balance, we can do that this year, uh, and we can do it, and we can do it next year, but you can't. Do that for like four years in a row, or five years, we're gonna run out of, run out of, uh, uh, money in the biggie bank, so. The, um, that's where we're trying to turn this around, and you'll see that the. Um.
And it was also that the AC was being run improperly.
So that's, when you were talking, yes, when you were talking about the, um, uh, natural gas costs, like, the, the, uh.
Unreal.
Yeah, going up, it's partially because the natural, cost of natural gases is increasing, but it's mainly driven by. We're now operating our HVAC, HVAC system in our boiler correctly, which means you have to run it twelve months out of the year rather than just six months out of the year. So when we're running it twelve months out of the year, you have to pay for the gas for a couple of months of the year, that's what, that's what's driving a large.
So the running it correctly is going to preserve the hardware.
It's good, it, yes, it's, yes. Correct. Yep, yeah, that's what we were talking about last, at the, at the last meeting, and just, yeah, there's, it's, it's a long-term view of it, yeah, it's gonna cost more upfront, but we're gonna run it correctly, and we'll get, hopefully, a longer life out of it.
Okay, there is less of the environmental costs to that too.
Correct, and, um, also, next year, we're looking at a capital asset study, including the, um, building improvements, uh, line, looking at capital asset studies, start, start thinking about what are our needs for the future? And that could include what is, what, you know, different, um, different ways to heat and cool our building as well.
Thanks, I think, alright, I'll be talking, yeah.
We're just part of that, that long-term. H back. Item. Much higher. So, okay, so, back to the, the original question, we are generally, we are, the direction for the staff is to. To continue to refine these numbers as information becomes available, that we are comfortable, um, with the framework that they have developed and populated. So far in part of us. And that we are, that they are, that they are moving in the right direction. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So.
You're listening?
I was gonna say, should I just say?
Round in the final turn here. Policies. At nine B.
So the first one is equity and racism, um, Stephen, you wanna join? Uh, I'm having, uh, I'm trying to, I want to see them and Billy, because, uh, there's HR pieces to it, and then there's the new pieces. Uh, the anti-racism and equity, um, how they collaborated together to, for this to come to be, so I pass it to you. We'll give it some back.
So, um, we drafted the policy. Two months ago, um, and we shared it with several staff members, a few committees, um, got some counsel from their library council. Um, we got a whole lot of info from a whole lot of people, inclusive, inclusive, um, communications committee. Um, anti-racism and equity advisory board, um, several other entities, and they, they gave, they gave suggestions, me and Billy, and, um, some of the leadership went back for, with some staff. Um, and this is what we have come up with, um, we also got a legal review, um, and they gave us some, some advice as well. Um, as you can see, it is a policy, but there is some procedures baked into it, um, and we just thought that, um. A good idea to do, um, because people need a guidance, um, and what better way to do it than to put it in, mix it in the policy? Uh, this is what, what we were thinking.
Yeah, I think I, what I would add to what Stephen said is that, um, this is part of the anti-racism strategic plan, was to come, develop this, develop this policy, if I'm correct. Okay, it is part of the anti-racism strategic plan, so this has been, you know, um, you know, months in the making, and, um. Yeah, it, this policy has had more eyes on it than any policy I've ever presented to the board, to the board, and, and we pick up things along the way, right, and, 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 you know, changes and whatnot. But talking about it being very, there's like some, a lot of very specific things in here, right? Um, I've heard from staff that they, the staff we're looking at, they, they appreciate the specificity, you know, from an attorney standpoint, they're like, can you make it a little more general, can you make it, you know, like. Yeah, like, no, and so, so that was like, that was, that was an interesting thing that we learned from, from this process, um, but keeping in that specificity. And, and each person's responsibility and what to expect, um, so, yeah.
I mean, I know I might be slightly biased, um, but I, I really enjoyed the. Not just the specificity, but I feel like a lot of policies, everyone has a background understanding of like, why are we making this policy? And we don't necessarily have that for anti-racism initiatives, so I do appreciate how much time and effort was put into. Defining things, spelling things out, not taking anything for granted when it was put in here, making sure that even the smallest steps were accounted for. Um, because I think outside of these walls, or as we interact with the community, not everyone does have the language or the vocabulary or the history of interacting with things. In this specific sphere, and so I, I appreciate, and I know how much extra effort it was for you to craft a policy that was. A policy and an education opportunity and its own glossary, and, and a lot of things that we don't usually have to put into a policy, so I very much appreciate. Um, and, and the number of eyes that you had on it, I, I think that's a great way of making sure that. We feel like it is inclusive in the way that we're, we're trying to move this policy, this process, and things, so. I appreciate all of that, you're there.
Um, racism was a definition, institutional definition of racism was also another initiative, um, objective of the strategic plan, another, um, check in that box. As well, we had several other definitions, but, um, we decided to take those out just because they weren't a part of this policy, so it makes sense a little bit, rather than a little, another space. Um we decided to take those out just because they weren't a part of this policy, so it makes sense a little bit over in another another space.
I have a I have a question or no couple maybe. Um so the the thing for us is page eighty eight, the at the bottom where it says no retaliation. And it says, you know, obviously, any individual retaliates against another for exercising their rights under this policy shall be subject to discipline. Right, so that we're obviously discouraging any kind of retaliation. Um and that includes, I think somewhere I saw that anyone can bring a complaint at at any point, correct? And I it it's I swear it's more than just because the two are slaying on top of each other, but like, I was trying to think about the con. Potential for conviction between the no retaliation and the unsubstantiated complaints thing, you know, because obviously the consequence, if I'm reading it correctly. Of unsubstantiated complaints is that all record is expanded, right? Like there is no history of this complaint having been made, so I'm wondering if there's no history, then. Like, is there a potential for retaliation? But we wouldn't be able to prove that it's retaliation because the.
Yes, it does, but there is a very specific change that the attorneys um made here. And it says there will be no rec and under unsubstantiated unsubstantiated complaints. The uh first sentence goes on to say, there will be no record of the complaint in the complaint's or respondent's main personnel file. We can still keep a record of the complaint, just not and it won't be in their files, so the you know, future manager goes to look at it, they're not gonna see it in their file.
So it's to prevent prejudice against that individual.
That doesn't erase the history, the organizational history, like it's a HR, like create a log of complaints.
Because I just, I mean, do you see my, because the the thing that I'm thinking about, for instance. Not at all, it's due to our library, I guess, but one of the things that I'm thinking about is that sometimes you have institutions which have. Like a cultural bias against, let's say, right, like, and so at the moment. Um a a harassment, an issue of harassment is not recognized as harassment, right? And then but they, so somebody files a complaint and they're like, this is an interpersonal issue, this is not like this, it's it's not this. Other HR thing, it's like. And and I'm just, I guess my concern is that the consequences to like the personal files, the complaint, if there's no record.
I don't know, maybe really to speak to this more, but based on what I heard you say, especially using the term harass harassment is um. Have it has has its own. Yeah, it's against the law, uh anti anything in this policy doesn't, there isn't anything, isn't any law um to uphold.
Yeah, yes and no, I mean, and so like this policy is like go. How do I say, we have a number of of employment policies, like the nondiscrimination, anti harassment policy. Um uh EEO policy, it can't it can't um just remain on against somebody against any uh for any protected class reason, right? Those are legally defined protected classes, I mean, all that, this goes beyond that, like this, there's no, like, we're legally required to follow the law. You have to follow the law, right? I mean, the policies that that mirror that. And but this policy goes beyond beyond that, and so I think what Stephen was getting at is um. Yes, of course, if somebody calls something harassment, I would investigate it under our harassment policy, but if someone's bringing bringing a complaint under this. Um I think we will we'll have to look into it, because I'm not gonna know if it rises to the level of. Uh equity issue or uh potentially racist racism issue.
The harassment thing wasn't, I'm sorry. Right, so I was saying like if there's a corollary, you know, to. I mean, there's just been a history of harassment things.
So perhaps in our in our like going beyond policy, if we look at like um. And our procedures, if we're committing to creating, keeping a log of of these complaints in a confidential. Either HR or with the director of veteran anti racism, a lot of complaints, regardless if they're substantiated or not, have a log of complaints that we can refer back to. Are you worried about losing the history of rap if we're?
I am, but I I mean, but it's a real question, because I see the real importance of. Of making sure that something that has not been proven to be true is not still. Do you know what I mean? Like, I I understand the spirit and the need for the the. Uh procedure around and and substantiated complaints, I'm just what because it just ain't real. For the people potentially finding it is unsubstantiated. Well, that's, well, this is this whole, right, yeah, but I mean, that's.
But that is always that, that is a underpinning question of all of these, you know, that that extends to. You know, this kind of inquiry that creates this and goes to the root of all of.
And you know, we deal with the situation I'm having, but I'm saying that anticipating the whole.
I get, but it's like, I I was responding. It's like, you know, how do you, who who determines it, it's like, that's all.
And that's why we, right, and that's why we wanna make sure that they're down. Yeah, like we we wanna make sure that we like. I I don't know, I don't know if you, I don't know if I've said.
How do we deal with unsubstantiated EEO complaints? And sexual harassment complaints?
We keep a file of the investigation, or we would keep, I mean, this is this hypothetical, because I um. Yeah, we just keep, we, I mean, there's just a file that we keep regardless if it's founded or unfounded, we would we'd keep a file of all the.
But it does not, but it does not go in either the reporter, the witnesses, or the. Her, you know, but that, you know, accused harassers personnel file.
Correct, it is a separate and confidential file, it's kept in kept in my office.
So this is parallel. To our EEO. And sexual harassment, this is in line with.
Ye- yes, but I would add that the difference here is if we spell this out rather than our EEO policy and our nondiscrimination anti harassment policy. Does not spell it out in this. Or what happens unsubstantiated complaints or.
It gives us steps, like you said, like, I mean, so, okay, this is happening, what do we do? This is what's gonna happen, we don't have that right now, and this policy does that.
And and that was part of the anti racism strategic plan, because um there were actual issues in in the past, so this is really alleviating that barrier.
And it takes a guess without it, like, what do we do? But it gives us some steps, it lets the staff know that you take it seriously, and here's a process that'll happen, um when we hear about it. And then it's and it's the same, that it's it gives us a standard also. So this this is handled this way, this is handled this way, this is here, nope, there's a standard, here's what happens. We do an investigation, this is what happened, nothing is found, so this is what this is offering.
And that's already a huge step in. For those issues related to discrimination.
Not treating people differently, um or handling it a different exit way, it helps all of us.
I'm biased because I love that the original restorative justice piece put in there, um instead of punitive, um.
Yeah.
I think that's key.
Yeah, I think so.
I I will say that as a general principle, I am not a fan of having. Procedures and practices in policy, but I will give it give it a feedback of, you know, the framework, you know, the framing that. You you provided about how this is constructed, I'll defer to the staff. On on this on this one, but it's for me generally, I'm I'm not a fan of it, but I understand where this is coming from and. I think it's a good idea, but it's just.
So you're saying you don't want us to be a policy, it should be a procedure?
No, I'm I'm comfortable in being it being a policy, I'm just saying as a general principle for myself personally. I am generally opposed to having procedures and practices specifically laid out in a policy. But hearing how this was constructed and put together, I think in this particular instance, I'm comfortable with it. But shit, so I was like, I didn't want to seem like I'm gonna vote, I I'm not gonna vote against it, but I would vote yes for this, but I just wanted to say it's like. Generally, that's how I feel, but in this case, it looked the the how it was developed. And what and how it was laid out here, I didn't comfortable in this situation being there.
So man, you just said really stated really well, we're at this conversation started with me and Stephen, I was in yours, I was saying the exact same thing you were saying to Stephen when I started. I was like, we can't, we can't do this, there's no way, and you know, you hear people, you hear you hear feedback, um I mean, specifically some of the staff, I've seen. Um I saw they were lighting up the uh Google Doc with comments, you know, and questions, and it's like, wow, if they have questions, this this is this specific? And they still have questions, man, we gotta do these details in, so that's how I came around to it.
We try to be cognizant of not giving you all procedures, like we stop ourselves a lot, you know, because I would say, let's take it, and it's like, no, that's a that's a procedure. To not take, so I appreciate that, yeah.
So are there any other questions that we have? Are we comfortable approving this this evening?
I am.
Would there be a motion? Second advice, Suzanne, um is there further discussion? Hearing now, I just wanna give the the remote participants a chance to unmute themselves before. Because sometimes they'll start talking and not realizing I was still on, I just wanna give, I wanted to give them a chance to find the unmute. Yeah, so. Um hearing no other discussion, all those who favor, say hi. As opposed to saying, hey, it's approved. Congratulations, thank you so much. And uh anti bullying policy.
Yeah, if if it wasn't captured under anti harassment and nondiscrimination, if it wasn't captured under uh EEO, if it's not captured under our newly approved. Anti racism and equity policy, we're gonna get it under anti bullying, um so it's just, it's just, I think it's just talking about. Instead, say stating more strongly what our organization is, is either um looking for a behavior of its staff and and what we won't tolerate in the favor of our staff. Um so that's what this anti bullying policy is.
Yes, I also was born out of the conversation with you all, um and it's about, um do we have that anti retaliation policy? Uh we, this is kind of speaking to doing the things that you think of when it comes to that as well, so here it is.
And speaking of policy versus procedures, this one's definitely more of the policy, like saying it will be investigated rather than saying all the steps, it doesn't have all the specificity. Um but we we were looking for more um clearly state. The um behaviors that we're that we're not going to accept, and then also saying that we're going to do something about it, that's what we need from like a legal aspect. Um you know, it's to like. Yes, people should know not to physically abuse or verbally abuse staff members, but now we're gonna say it, we're gonna say there's consequences, it makes it a stronger um. Legal argument when we when we take action for if against somebody who does.
Can I, um I I I actually really appreciate the. The book, the uh the line items that articulate the examples of bullying, I think that that's really. Important to be able to visualize, so I I appreciate that, I'm wondering. If there's any room to reintroduce, even if briefly, that restorative justice aspect here. So um you know, staff members found engaging, engaging bullying will be dealt with appropriately, up to including termination, and I understand that it's. Obviously, the wording is suggesting that not the only option, but I think everywhere else, we have this commitment to restorative justice, and it just. I I wonder if it behooves us to have like a phrase or something. That articulates that that would be hopefully a first line of. Yeah, that, you know, that the the principles of restorative justice would apply here too, you know, including trying to repair harm and. Have that comparative aspect to it.
So maybe e- uh expanding upon like what appropriately dealt with appropriately might might include.
And I'm not saying that we need like the the detail of the procedure that we just saw with the anti racist policy, but I am saying like. Something that signals that even here, the commitment to restorative justice is like our first line option. It's the first approach that we take. And if if you if you agree that it is the first approach.
I don't know, I I if somebody, if there's a bullying situation, I don't, I don't know, I would be concerned about like me victimizing first again. So then I'm dealing with this bully, and then now, you know, like I have to sit in a restorative justice practice kind of situation. And.
But that would be true for the anti racist one too, and for all the, or do you know what I mean, like that would be, that's the. That's the hard part about restorative justice, right, is that that you don't start with a punitive perspective, but that you're. Acknowledging even the humanity of the person who is causing harm. Correct, so.
And recognizing that there's relationship aspect.
And again, I I'm not saying that it has to run the whole gamut, and so maybe it's just worth thinking about for a little bit longer, but I think that.
I think there's a little difference, because you may not, if it's a bullying situation, you may not want or need to have a relationship with the person. Where anti racism to me is everything, and so you have to learn the one thing, whether. And so there's a chance there to learn, but that's just my concern, I just, you you offer that.
Yeah.
To me, like, it it does need to be, to me, it does need to be dealt with in a way of saying, okay. If we document, it happens, and then there there are steps, so it's not like we go from zero to a hundred, sure, so you know, you they, people do have opportunity to turn it around.
Right, and I I mean, and and that's, I think that that is, that's um embedded in that rule, including an up to termination. So that's what I'm saying, is that there's that, but I I think you're looking for like an asterisk, when is the up to? Yeah, or like starting from here to here, do you do you know what I mean? Like that, that's what I'm saying, and again.
When somebody is bullying me, I have to help them, and they've been, you know, doing all kinds of stuff to me, I don't, you know, I.
And I and and as I'm looking, and I think about it, it's, I think that there is also a factor of within the equity and anti racism. Each of the sort of justice, I think we are also dealing with, you know, in that framework, you know, certain systemic factors. And some on a possibly unintentional act, whereas in my mind, bullying is a very, is an intentional. Uh act of aggression against another person, and I think that for me, I mean, I have to say that that's not in in the case of equity, you know, in racism. And and those issues, but for me, it's the bullying is a separate, it can fall in that separate thing where. It is a very intentional act, as someone who, you know, and so it's like, so I I hear where you're coming from in terms of that, but like, for me, it's like.
I mean, you have, you have me, I totally said that the, I mean, the racism can be very intentional.
It it can be, yes.
And the the I think the magic, I mean, you know, again, I don't have to be the one that says this, but of course, you know that. The point, the like starting of restorative justice practices was for like victims of marginalized. Processes, right, like of oppression, right, and and recognizing that they have humanity, that this has happened to us. And then we were trying to, you know, we're we're penalizing in a way that's only duplicating the trauma. And what we're doing here is by saying that even in the anti racism, we're looking at even potential perpetrators of racism. With that like compassionate restorative lens, which is huge, you know, and I and I think that. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying that you have to, but I I would ask that you think about it.
But I would say too, okay, thank you. Uh but like in a workplace, you don't, we're we're not responsible for rehabilitating a book. We are responsible for stopping someone from doing these acts to someone and letting them know it's not appropriate, it's unacceptable. And again, I I feel like there's even in um a progressive discipline, there there is restorative justice in that. Because what you're saying is you give the person a chance to turn it around by making them aware of it, you're talking to them, you're documenting it, that's it. So to me, that would be there's in a workplace situation, uh because then we're hoping, we're making a wider situation for us if we allow it.
I'm saying that if we're, we have the progressive discipline, then we articulate from where to where we're progressing. That that's what I said, so I'm not saying we're inventing new practices, I'm saying we're articulating. In the in the name of like, in, sorry, in the spirit of naming. In the in the name of like, in sorry, in the spirit of naming the commitment to restorative justice everywhere, we're saying. That we're not starting with just terminating people.
Right, so you're gonna have someone say like, staff members not engaged in bullying will be dealt with appropriately. Um with engagement from a conversation with your manager up to and through termination.
It as this is right, exactly, like so, we're not taking any, we're we're not um. Calling bullies, you know, I don't think that's what I'm asking for, I'm just saying that if it is progressive, which I think it is.
It is.
Then you then we articulate those eight, those uh those commit or the or some of those stages, again, I I want to be regular, I'm not asking for something. Quite as detailed as the as the anti racism. So I'm not, I I guess I'm not a hundred percent convinced that the differences between like a person who's bullying because they're racist and a person who's bullying. Because they're a bully are always immediately disertable, so I I don't, I am not seeing necessarily that distinction uh that.
You can do video with practices without being bullied necessarily, so if it's systematic, there's.
Yeah, but but you know, like you said, the workplace is not a place to rehabilitate, it's not absolutely. It's also not a place I would vote to rehabilitate racists, so do you know what I mean, like that, that doesn't have to be the language.
But it's mainly in the context of work, correct, so I I'm not comfortable with it, because I picture someone getting bullied. And it's systematically happening, but I think to um take the feedback of what you're saying. I think when it says that they're, you know, up to, if that is saying we will approach all different kind of ways. So there may be an opportunity for doing depending on it, um depending on the situation, but I I don't wanna say. Oh, we'll start with, because I think that's it, because we'll start with restorative, because it might not be appropriate, it might be so bad. That we might need to go to a hundred, um so.
Says that in there and that we'll take steps.
Well, you know, and then it's progressive, it's loose enough in the policy sense. Right, right, it's loose enough that that could be a possibility and and incorporating your feedback and taking it. Um I think you're right, I think that's something we look at, we can talk about, like will I have to talk to Billy about it, or if I hear about it, like that is something.
And that and that could live in the procedure practice. If the procedure document that is that supports this policy, that flows from this policy, but the policy. Covers it with that up to including, because through year to year, how that looks might change based on the tools available.
Why is there so little here?
No, no, I just I understand that we we have the conversation about the other policy and why it was, why it was different and the specific circumstances. So I I I totally get that, I'm not disagreeing with that, and I'm in maybe. The proportion that I'm talking about, the the proportional. Um acknowledgement of what I'm talking about is not as much as we were thinking it is, but I I. I actually frankly still believe, having I think understood what you're saying. That the. That to articulate the possibility of a more compassionate response doesn't mean that you are being. Permissive in a in a way, do you know what I mean, that I I just I'm just do not say it's good, I'm just do not convinced that that's true, I again. I will, I will think about this, I will personally do to think about this, because I think that there's. I'm just talking about like a word or a phrase, you know, not something that says that we will start everybody here, but something that that acknowledges. That this has not left our.
Could it be something like um restorative justice will be um included where possible, like when possible. But I'm simply interested, yeah, just in the language in there, but leave it open. Right, except. Making complaint, having that in there, they may may actually make somebody more able to start. Saying something, so rather than waiting until it's some big thing. Do you know what I mean, like and that's why, like and that's why it can't be too spelled out and say that you will always start with it. Because somebody may wait to make a complaint.
But the idea that we have to participate in restorative justice. As part of a part of that.
But it's not that you have to, I think it's just emphasizing the option, and I I do think like restorative. Justice and restorative practice is a value that I think everyone here really stands behind. And so if we do, I do think things need to be seen through that lens, and so it shouldn't just. Like the language can be more inclusive and compassionate, I I totally hear you, Madari.
Thank you, Stephen. Yeah.
I I think as written, it's to create a ceiling of the most extreme.
No, I get that.
So I will say like, I write, and I write documents like this all the time where I just create the ceiling, but if you. Uh but I understand what you're trying to say, and so you would like wording more along the lines of um. Staff members who are found to participate in bullying. Can uh you know, will receive uh depend on depending on the severity of said bullying. May um have talking to, suspension, or even termination, something like that.
I it's not, I didn't, I took, okay, so what I what I. We're disagreeing, that's that's fine, but what I I don't want to do right now. Is to tell Jocelyn and Billy what kind of language to put in here, I I don't think that that is.
That's what we have to do.
No, I disagree that this is what we have to do right now.
I was gonna say, I think we've expressed everything to Jocelyn and Billy, maybe we just decide this is not one that we're gonna approve right today, and I, yeah, and. I I know that I'm thrown off because the anti racism policy did have so much extra in it. And I'm now looking at this and I need to be bringing um because it's not, it's not all just like that. For all the reasons that we talked about, so I would I would be fine with this deciding we're gonna hold up on this. Think about it, take a look at it outside of the context of having just read the anti racism and.
I I agree, I think you're right, Virginia, I think it's like it's the anti racist policy really influenced us all. And part of that is because I think processes, sorry, my child is screaming, he should be asleep, but um. Part of that is because process is such a big part of racial equity work and and anti racism work, and so I think we're all entering this and being like. Why isn't the process is clear, and I can understand again why it isn't, because that's not what a policy does, but then I go back to like. Status quo and how how we are trying to advance things um. And maybe there's a reason for why this is uncomfortable right now, I think it is different, but I think it's a really worthy conversation.
This anti bullying policy is staff to staff, this is not patron to staff, and it's not terribly clear. I think I think implicit, this is like the name staff to staff.
Well, it says that the library expects all staff members, interns, patrons, volunteers, contractors, vendors, trustees. And other visitors to demonstrate appropriate behavior, so it does.
In the basement there, which outlines behavior, I think goes into a lot of these things, that if you're if you're disruptive. If if you are causing certain things, you may be asked to leave for a period of time or may be banned from the library, that's already a policy. But I was a little, I was a little concerned that this. Looks like it's just just back to staff, and I think that's your intention.
Um it's not just, it is a library employment policy and 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 from an employment perspective, we have um what's the word um. Like leverage against employee because we, their paycheck is dependent on the library, so we can say, don't act like that, you have to act like this. And there and then and we have that leverage for the uh patron or other visitor, we have, you know, other mechanisms that we can that we can use.
Answer my question.
And we wanna and we wanna, yeah, we wanna hold those expectations for all staff, but really like when we're talking about holdings, like this is per holding staff accountability. Um and we talk about um uh the remedies and from that perspective, but there are remedies if a patron is. Is bullying a staff member, there there are things that we can do from our end as well, or from from the library's end. But this is a, this is written as a staff, um I'm sorry, a library employment policy.
So I I I it sounded like there was a willingness to table consideration of this policy until later dates. Um does that sound?
With with the direction of what, I mean, to bring it back as is, or to or to think about that that sentence and what.
I think it sounds like there is uh interest from members of the board to uh. See if there can be a revision uh to that um second to last sentence regarding. Um the up to including termination to see how um if it can be. Uh revised to include other um.
Is there an innovation for revision, I mean, I don't, I I don't think I have to really say it because we really need this. Um is is there a recommendation of how to edit it to include what you're thinking of what we talked about extensively?
Um if you're asking me, I guess it would be um. I don't need, can I get back to?
I I have a recommendation based on other other policies, and this is this is a bit of an outlier, appropriately, like how do you define appropriately? If we replace it with replacing appropriately with, we'll receive progressive corrective action up to and including termination. Like progressive corrective action, um that could that could mean a lot of different things, corrective action, we have corrective action policy, and there's a lot of things that are listed in there. Restorative justice is not listed in there yet, um but but I feel like that gives you a lot more like. To define like what appropriate is, like if you can look at our corrective action policies, more definitions. So so what do you wanna see in this policy, is the sentence that says restorative justice?
Well, I some, at least that that's an option.
No, or the, I mean, it sounds vague, but I actually want to start around here. Can I ask again if I can, if I can send you a suggestion, because I want to think about what you said too. And then include that in my my suggestion, is that okay?
Sure.
And I think we should take that word with Jocelyn said that you don't want to revictimize the person who's.
Yeah, that is the, that is the part.
And this is what we do, and everything is not a restorative practice, especially when it comes to bullying, and. And that's just how I feel about it, like, and we, it's not something used all the time, but I hear what you're saying too. I I feel like what I'm hearing you say is included as an option, um and have that broadly, and I feel like it's in there in a saying. Like it'll include up to and including, so that could mean any number of things, I think you, I heard you say, we just wanna be careful not being so specific. Uh which is the concern we have with the other policy, it is so specific, and this is the example why I thought that sounded good, because. And that's where I'm stuck, because I don't want to say, yes, we're gonna do that, because it might not be appropriate every time, if I'm doing something really harmful for someone. And for me to pause and have the person sit there, like it's, I don't think that's our job to to do that with every single day, it's not appropriate.
Good question, I know this, this isn't a term for employee policy, is this necessarily going to be posted somewhere? Or insurance?
I mean, all our policies are.
Yeah, they're available, okay, I will, I will be very forthcoming, these are also a lot of the same introductory. Um actions from abusive partners, so I want us to be cognizant about posting something that could be triggering. Um I know it will be made available um.
It's just in the policies, it will be, it it will be like, here's a flyer, like someone would have to be digging through all of her hundreds of policies to find this. But it is, it is available on the website, probably.
Uh let's go to the um.
Okay, so um we have P cards and um we have some. Or we potentially can get them, and so uh we have no policies around it. We have uh we have over thirty staff members with their cards, and I think it's just eventually responsible. Whereas that's a policy around expectations of using them, um and you know, the finance uh service team supports me in that. Um we've done some investigating on other libraries that have policies about using P cards and credit cards, so we've done some research on that. Um and the plan is, uh if this is approved, to have it with staff to go over every year, over time to get a um P card. Um to have some. Like a a a training session, and then you have to sign that you understand the expectations, it's not very likely, it's just, you know, here's here's. What is appropriate to use it, here's what is not appropriate to use, um the expectations around it, or also around the budget, just going back to the budget conversation. Uh people want to stick to the budget, you can't, we don't want people saying, oh, the whiteboard, okay, file that, it's it's hard to. Keep to a budget when people do that, so we wanna really have people, um you know, just have some expectations and to make it clear.
So the history of the past, when there was a.
There is not.
Correct. Was there currently thirty four cardholders, you know, sitting in this room and around the library, so. It, I mean, no, really, it's been relatively like without issue, but we've got, we gotta be, we have to be, you know, consistent, something we appoint to. Um something we train on, something um that uh also like, I think they're gonna sign, they'll create a card or agreement that they'll sign. Just it's it's all about just, it's like, it's a, it's one piece of a huge uh financial control mechanism, we just gotta keep, just get this piece in mind so that we can hold people accountable to it.
I think this is especially good for us to tackle during budget season, because we we all just lifted the number and did our P for a day and.
And we wanna make it clear, so it's not, and then we want it again to be equitable, we don't wanna do three to ten different things when it does a little. Or if people don't know, we can't say, well, why did you do that, what we never said is that situation.
Are so, are it's assigned by seniority, does the department have to say like, I don't like to money on the signing this to somebody else, or like how how are they?
Cur- currently or or with the or with this policy, like what?
Yes.
We're we're applying a policy.
Currently, I think it was, it was historically, it's been based on like, like need, you know, like if you have expenses that could generally be paid by. Credit card, then you could get a credit card, but we're gonna be looking to get a fresh look at that list of who all has a credit card, based on the eligibility criteria outlined in this. Um policy, um it is not based on any specific position or hierarchy, it is based on, you know, if you're uh. Receive approval from your department director, you hold a position that requires travel, purchase significant volumes of items or services to be used by the library. Or or other regular frequent library expenses.
So that one I thought, there are probably departments where everybody in this department should have a license.
Yeah, correct, correct, and that's what we're seeing, so we wanna make sure we have that flexibility, but um with that flexibility, also make sure you have these um expectations.
Because we had that thought about the PRP for a minute, but to your point, it's not basically, and it it would also. Be in conjunction with your supervisor saying it too, because we've had people say, well, I want a P card. Okay, can I, can I have one, it's like, we made a conversation around it, why, need to coordinate with your supervisor. Um and then everybody's like, poor persons, but you know, if there's no guidelines, it's not anyone's fault, they just, well, I saw it there.
We we also might discover that there's another way to pay to pay for those service fee, not using a credit card, we can figure out some other way to pay to pay for it.
It's not a look for everything, but.
This is gonna sound smart, yeah, honestly, it's not, but the cardholder duties and expectations, that's outline a bunch of processes in this volume.
Yeah, it does, because we we wanna be crystal clear on those for staff, because these are the ones that we get questions about. And those don't were like, were put in the policy, but very specific, um yeah, I get it. What's policy, what's procedure, what do you include, what do you, what what don't you?
I also understand that this is a little bit different, because of course, um this is the only place that exists, right, if we don't have one. We don't have anything right now, so I get that.
The same conjunction is something they sign, that that piece might disappear and it might turn into, what is the credit card number for free, do you have that yet?
Um once this policy is been discussed and roomed, I'll create the agreement based on, based on these, it's gonna outline the expectations of of the policy.
Okay, then once it's decided, so we can, and we know, I didn't see it.
So this is a place for for the tasks that will then be moved to the thing that they're going to sign, there is nowhere to move it until there's actually a policy in place. Is there a procedure for if it like goes over the limit or they charge something that shouldn't or.
There is not right now. There is not right now.
Oh, I didn't see the second page. Thank you.
Yeah, and and I mean, thinking about like, if someone does go over, I mean, is it a one time thing, is it a regular thing? We're gonna, this is where, um, it says, interoperable use of library credit card will result in appropriate corrective action up to. And including termination of employment. Would you like me to insert restorative justice? But, but yeah, it's a conversation, it's, it's, most of these result in conversations, right? And I'm jumping to termination, jumping to to written more, it's, it creates a conversation, like, we talked about this policy, you sign this cardholder agreement. What happened, you know?
But that, to your point, I mean, saying, you know, like, you don't need to be sorry, but I I don't either, but that's what I'm saying, it keeps it loose. So it can, it can be any number of things.
Yeah, but there is some facts, but there's some clarity about the process, right? If there's no, I, I understand we've had this whole discussion about when policy should include process or not. But I'm saying here, it seems to make sense, because there is a clarity about what the, what the process is. There's some articulation that it's not like you screw up and you're out the door. Do you know what I mean? That's not, that's not.
Not in the anti bullying either, it's not this one. It it says in.
But, but I'm saying that if that anti bullying, it, you're right, that the the phrase, including and up to. But there is no appropriate progressive corrective action phrase in the anti bullying right now. That, that's not in there right now, and there is, and it also doesn't follow up to some articulation. Of ideas, of processes, does that make sense? Like, that's, it follows from what? What counts, but here there's like, here's what you do to try and correct the mistake that you made. Does that make sense?
I'm just, yes, I, I thought it has some way to set up to and including, if it doesn't, then we need to put it.
No, no, it does have up to including, it doesn't have progressive corrective action, as we.
It just says appropriately, the anti bullying policy says appropriate, it doesn't expound upon it. It's interesting you point this out, because, you know, Stephen talked about all the work that went into the equity and anti racism policy. Um, a lot of work went into this credit card holder agreement. The anti bullying policy is a policy pulled from a HR source that we just edited to kind of match our language, but didn't write it ourselves. So perhaps if we did, it would have had more of the. That language to match what you're saying.
I think there was a reason for that, because we want to follow, follow the law. Oh, that is, you have to be careful of that, so we're not saying things that are, you know, that we can't say and hold people accountable for, and then we get it. So there's a reason.
No, yeah, yeah, of course, there's a reason.
This one.
Is there any other questions, comments, concerns before we have motions?
My only was just that circular thing, it's a credit card holder agreement, it doesn't exist yet, but it can't be made till, this is what I've done. But it's included in here that we're voting, I think, you know.
Do we have a draft record?
Yes, it is.
It'll be from this, it's just a.
And that'll be procedure, like the, the. But we need the policy. To give the procedure of having a form displayed at the lab.
You need the policy to create the.
So, I mean, honestly, I was like, I'm not going to spend the time creating the cardholder agreement until I know this language is okay. With the, with the board, I'm gonna cut, cut this from, or copy it from here, paste into cardholder agreement, add a signature line. And then, and then start, because there's a lot of work that follows behind this policy. Once this policy is adopted here, we gotta go into training all thirty four cardholders, well, sorry. Assessing all thirty four cardholders for eligibility, then go about uh training and have them sign the cardholder agreement.
Yeah, I'm just relaxed. So there's a chance that you do the assessment and that you might take people's credit cards.
Potentially.
That happen.
Potentially, if they don't meet the eligibility criteria.
Because we had them previously, it's just, you get a card, you get a card, you don't get a card, you get one. And so we're trying to do better than that, in this, in the spirit of having a responsible budget. And 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 so people, it's clear, so it's clear the expectations, because that's also not fair, there are none, or you don't, you get a card or. Um, well, she has one. So, yeah.
I'm giving it.
Is there a motion to approve?
Uh, yes, so.
Is there a second?
A little late, I. Oh, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it to you. Uh, I would, it, for the discussion, my, my only. Thing would be, I would, once this has been established, I would like staff to re- review this. And redetermine if any of this language needs to be revised to be less procedural. And practice, um. And if we can refer to documents and other things. You know, one, you know, once the forms are established and those requirements exist in those documents. If we can, you know, uh, move this back towards more. Traditional policy language, but I understand that there is a need to have some of this to create in the first place.
Can you help me understand your concern about there being too much information in the policy?
Too many specific steps.
Why is that?
Because how that is creates. In inflexibility for staff to respond to practice and procedure as things dictate and. Cause then it turns into, well, you violate your policy and opens up and possibly opens us up for. Various legal challenges for, you know, in, you know, uh unequal treatment. Under things, if the staff needs to uh respond in a way, given new developments in. Wha- whatever that, that policy language that we specified for specific steps and things. No longer applies, no more, or it doesn't apply to that particular situation. But we laid out that this is the step, and we, it's like the thing with um the FOIA. Why is the policy naming a particular employee by name? That's, that's, that's not appropriate. That's like, staff person is not always going to apply, it is not always going to be employed here. So what do we have to do? Then change a policy every time an employee's status changes. Or your organizational structure changes, you need to identify the per, the role. And not necessarily the person, and some of these things.
So it was different. So can I, I mean, this is, I, I actually, I just, I agree, I agree with mine on this one, because like, let's, this is. Uh, so receipts for each card must be uploaded and processed, right? Like, that's a, that, that, right, like, so that uploading is something that needs a process right now. Ten years from now, there might be another form in which people are collecting. You know, hopefully the policy will be. Like, so the, the, the process or like, you have to make sure that there are separate bodies. So that every time you want to change the technology.
Policy is, receipts must be submitted in the appropriate method. You know, you know, it, it as this, as defined by.
It's just the, the tricky part is like. The power dynamic at, at play, you know, and the, if the. Yeah, there's just, there's a power.
In general, my perspective on policy is not something that needs to be revised every year. Because a piece of technology changed or a piece of staffing has changed, but that policy could be. A multi-year document that holds up to generally guide us as staff in that. Procedures and practices change. Can we change annually, monthly? We should not be, something should not be so specific in here that we need to review it every year. Because situations in related to that specific thing are so beautiful.
Recommendation of just crossing out our duties and expectation. If I'm hearing what you're saying, if we keep this, which are just policy things, here's what you do, here's what you don't do, those generally won't change.
Yeah, if you want, like, if there's.
Cross out the duties, just like you said, that can change at any moment, and that has really nothing to do with policy. It's what we would share as the expectation.
My assumption on that was that once the policy is created, that's going to be exported to be signed on, so. That would, no one could be.
Yeah.
But then, then.
Would it be better?
Then we would have to come back and.
Would it be, how about this, would it be possible to?
Could we approve that policy, but because we.
May, may I suggest, may, may, may I suggest?
That we have, that the policy. Be amended to strike the cardholders' duty section, but will I be instituted? That says, um, the, the use of credit cards will, will align with. You know, you, or whole, you know, that are expected to. Or something that will reference.
About the last one.
Yeah, the last one. I think that's part of the policy.
Yeah, I think, yeah, hit the last line, it goes to.
Hit the last line.
Progressive pieces. Um, but then strikes, to your point, all the procedural stuff, because it could change. It could be a hologram another year, it could be, you know, it could have a tattoo on it, or, um, I don't know. Right, yes, right, under our skin or something. Could change. But you don't, that one, it hasn't been, and then it is policy stuff, it's, it's a general. The points that we talked about, all these things, like, we've got to stay out of the procedure way.
So, yeah, the, the, the first four sections of the cardholder duties.
Do you, I, I feel like the first, I understand the first three sections, that the fourth section. Credit cardholders must return any cards to the finance team at the end of the employment. Or at the request of, if they lose their eligibility, like that should be policy, but.
That's fair, that's a, that's a fair. That, I think that's. I like that, you know, just.
So maybe the first two paragraphs, then, definitely strike.
The first three.
So are we, so are we going back to this one then, after we, the, after the changes?
I mean, I, I would, what my recommendation is, um. Add the edits, and then could we re-sign it to be approved? Yeah, um, because then we wanna, we wanna then have the, be able to in the next thirty days have it where we have it. So we talk to the staff about the expectations and the policy, and we get something in place. Um, rather than, so hold it again, because then we won't be able to do anything. And so the next year at that way.
Yeah, so what you're saying is that we approve it, we approve it, we're just assuming these changes?
Well, let's make the changes, and could we amend the, um.
The, the, the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion.
We did, or if you would like to withdraw the motion and we can start a motion. Am I here, I'm hearing no objection to the drawing of the motion.
Well, yeah, what's me, and I do. Actually, it was Maya.
But yes, my, my, um, Maya, are you okay with the motion being withdrawn?
Yes.
Cool. Um, so the edits to the policy as presented would be to strike. Paragraphs one, two, and three under cardholder duties and expectations. And we relieve, and we could even the, 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 so basically the sentence that says. Credit cardholders must return any cards to the team at the end of their employment. Or if they have been determined to be ineligible, uh, to no longer be eligible to be a holder. And then intentional, and then we will also leave in the sentence that says intentionally continued. Or repeated conformance will result in appropriate progressive corrective action up to and including termination of employment. Those two pieces will remain, the three, other three paragraphs will be deleted. And that would be the policy that we would be considering for approval.
Where will those other um lines of, uh, under cardholder duties and expectations?
So that would go, when we have the session with the team, then that even do something to get them, it's all game out. Here's what you do, and here's how you process it, here's the expectation to turn it in. So it won't get lost, it won't ever be said again, but it's just not a policy.
Credit, credit card holder agreement, training documents, yeah, uh, procedures. Is that, because that's really what we need the staff to do, and all the rest is like, is, is, is policy. What do we need staff to do, it's those, it's those.
So yes, we're, we're, it, it, it's not leaving the organization, it's just being. Pushed into.
We have the, the, the daily operational part and.
Agreement people sign?
Um, I think so. I think it will, because that's really, when you're getting a credit card, you're like, I need you to, I mean, I need you to do these things.
Well, I think then that gives people the opportunity to have. The appropriate expectations. I think, I think the more that people know, the better.
Accountability, it's a thing they can point to and say, this is what you agreed. And to do, to Matt's point, I can edit the cardholder agreement and our training procedures. As done, as needed, I don't have to bring it back to the board to vote on it.
And we did talk about that, like. Stumbling on it, yeah, like, exactly, and so we won't have to do that, so thank you for.
So with those, with those changes, those three paragraphs being removed, is there a motion to approve this policy?
So moves.
Maya, get the, get the motion. Ma, Remo, would you like to second? Seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. The opposed say nay. I hear, I heard an aye. Uh, any of sentence hearing none, it is approved. Having completed the posted agenda for, for our business this evening, I would like to adjourn.